If I could ask you to please take your seats, it is now 1:15. The Board of County Commissioners will reconvene. We do have a quorum. And we'll move now to public hearings on 5B1 Housing and Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners Jonathan Brown, Department of Housing and Economic Development, along with Dort Miller, our Assistant County Administrator, Sherry Howard, our Deputy Director, and we have also with us our county representation, David Behar.
Jonathan, before you begin, if anybody needs a presentation on this item, if not, then we can make a motion to approve item 5B1.
Second.
And also states that neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county fund shall be pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on the bonds.
Very good. Motion has been made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. On the agenda of 5B1, I don't have any comment cards from members of the public or comments from members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. That item passes six to zero.
Mr. Mayor, on item 5B2, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item and also states that neither the taxing power nor the faith and credit of the county nor any county fund shall be pledged to pay the principal premium, if any, or interest on the bonds.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard on the agenda, item 5B2, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. There's no comment cards from members of the public or comments from members of the board, all in favor, all opposed. 5B2 passes six to zero. 5C1 has been removed from this agenda. I think it'll be back on August 26. 6A1 on the regular agenda, Environmental Resources Management, relating to an amendment on State Road 7. Would any Commissioner like a presentation?
Move approval of 6A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, motion made on 6A1 by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. There's no comments by members of the public or the board, all in favor, all opposed. 6A1 passes five to one with Commissioner Weiss dissenting. 6B1 on the regular agenda, libraries. This is related to the county's library strategic and long-range plan for FY 2022 through 2024. And Director of Libraries is recognized, sir.
Good morning.
Can you make sure your microphone's on, please?
Is it on? Okay, great, thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Kerner, Vice Mayor Weinroth, and Honored County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Doug Crane, Director for the County Library System. With me today is Deputy Director Aurora Arthee and Assistant County Administrator Todd Von Lauren. We are here to share the library's strategic and long-range plan for the fiscal years 2022 to 2024, which was designed to support our vision to open minds to a world of unlimited possibilities and our educational mission to connect communities, inspire thought, and enrich lives. The purpose of the library's strategic plan is to provide guidance for the delivery of library services. It reflects changes occurring in our community and in the information environment. In 2017, the strategic plan was updated and modernized to align with our vision and mission statements. It incorporated feedback from county residents and library staff concerning the community's needs and the way that the library can help meet those needs. The goals and objectives are based on the identified needs and emerging trends in order to maximize the library's impact throughout Palm Beach County.
The plan for fiscal year 2022 and 2024 has been updated to reflect the anticipated changes brought about by the COVID-19 pandemic. In response to the new environment, we shifted toward providing more electronic resources, developed a hybrid approach to activities by offering both in-person and virtual activities, and are carefully transitioning back to our pre-COVID levels of service. Our strategic plan connects communities by enhancing the role of the library in the community and offering services beyond the library's walls. Through three goals, we intend to build partnerships that best leverage library resources with our community partners, as well as promote inclusivity and embrace diversity in collections, services, activities, and spaces. The library inspires thought, supported by two goals, to provide access to technology, services, and activities designed to meet the digital literacy needs of the citizens of Palm Beach County. In addition, we provide a world-class collection of print, music, audiobooks, magazines, and electronic resources for borrowing and research that supports the needs and interests of our members. The plan enriches lives by leading us to design family learning opportunities to improve a child's ability to achieve academically. Through two goals, we intend to provide a summer reading program to people of all ages and offer activities for adults that will facilitate the community to learn and develop new skills. During the first quarter of, during the first three quarters of fiscal year 2021, the library loaned over 5,631,000 physical and electronic items. We presented nearly 5,000 virtual activities to over 53,500 library members. We processed 403 passports from February through June 2021. We distributed 638 boxes of summer meals in partnership with youth services. We hosted 1,220 SNAP benefit consultations, and we assisted community services with a review of over 1,700 emergency rental assistance and LIHEP applications.
Looking forward at our capital projects, the Wellington branch and the Lantana Road branch are both currently closed for renovations. However, both projects are being completed soon with expected openings before the end of the calendar year. The groundbreaking in construction of our newest branch in the Canyon Town Center is scheduled to begin in early 2022 with a projected opening in mid-2023. The plan, this plan we present to you today, will serve as a guide for the library's future development as a cornerstone of a well-informed and educated community. I want to give my appreciation and thanks to the board for your ongoing support of library services in Palm Beach County. We deeply appreciate it, and we appreciate the trust you put in us to administer it. This concludes our presentation. We welcome any questions that you may have.
Very good. I don't see any questions at this time. We're delighted by the vision and the great service you've provided through this very challenging time period. There are motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve 6B1.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. We're now on 6C1, which does have public comment, Community Services. And Nancy, you and your team are recognized.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This item seeks your approval for nine full-time equivalent positions grant-funded to assist community services staff in administering almost $100 million worth of emergency rental funds through the American Recovery Act. I do have staff here on hand to present this item if it is your wish or just to ask questions.
I don't see, Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this presentation, brief presentation. In regard to some of the positions, do you have like a plan in regards to a position where people who cannot come into the building, you know, how would they get services? Is that addressed in here?
Yes, it is. We have a mobile outreach service that goes out into the low-income communities. So we partner with a number of organizations to ensure that our vulnerable populations have access to the services that we're providing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Yes, ma'am.
Just to add, we have partnered with 10 libraries.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Each of those libraries has one community services staff available for in-person services every day 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., depending upon the library locations. Plus, we have partnered with seven nonprofit agencies where we have in-person assistance available.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the brief presentation. I just wondered, though, can you, just for the, to help the public that might be watching us, just if you can just briefly talk a little bit about this program, you know, the funding source from it, and the amount of people you're able to assist with this?
Do you want to go over the presentation real quick? Because a couple of the slides have that information.
If you want, if that makes it a little easier for you.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do it.
So we are seeking your approval for the second phase of ERAP funding. The first phase started in March of 2021 of this year, where we received $42 million. And the second ERAP funding, which we received back in May, has close to $49 million in allocation. So both of these programs have a slight variations. The first ERAP 1 funding specifically is COVID-related. Your crisis has to be a COVID crisis. However, the ERAP 2 funding is any crisis which occurred during this pandemic. So that allows more clients to apply for these services if they are experiencing any hardship. The, for both the fundings, one of the criteria is that you cannot exceed 18 months of services. So if you already received 15 months in ERAP 1, you can only receive additional three months in the ERAP 2 funding. This slide shows all the assistance we have done under the ERAP 1. These numbers are as of August 13. However, as of today, we have processed close to $25 million in services and assisted 5,000 unique households. And that equates to approximately 7,800 payments because some of those clients are repeat clients coming back for services. The program is for area median income, 80% and below. And this chart shows the area median income, 80% and below for Palm Beach County. For household of one, 80% is $49,200. And for household of four, it is $70,250. And we are calculating the AMI based on your 2020 income. So if you lost your job or have a reduced income in 2019, sorry, 2020, after the pandemic, you will be eligible for services. This slide shows the race and ethnicity of our current applicants. We have served 61% of Black and African-American community and 34% of white. 84% of the applicants are non-Hispanic. We are also tracking the applicant for these applications, and 77% of the applicants are female and 23% are male. It is just based on who is experiencing the COVID crisis or if the household member decided to apply on behalf of the rest of the family. This particular slide talks about the city of residence of applicants. The cities of applicants' residences are displayed above with the total number served and the amount dispersed for each areas. The cities with highest number of ERAP 1 applicants are West Palm Beach, close to 2,700 applicants, Boynton Beach, 884, Lakewood, 647, Riviera Beach, 565, and Boca Raton, 539. This slide represents applicant count for ERAP based on the Commissioners District. This is, these numbers are inclusive of rent and utilities based on the BCC districts. We have implemented some of the promising practices, which has really helped us to spend this $25 million. We have been leveraging partnerships, like a library just mentioned, that they are assisting us with this work. We are doing, we have implemented Oscars, which is our online application system, which we launched in 2015, and that really helped us to get this money out through our online portal. So we have been working to remove the barriers and then remove the document burden, which is one of the federal requirement to get this money out in the community. We have automated property appraisers with the property appraisers checks for landlord verification to make sure the landlord is the current landlord for that property. We are doing the daily exception reports to mitigate fraud. We have been sending automated IG referrals. As of now, as of today, we have sent 35 referrals to Inspector General. We have automated landlord confirmations and links them to register as a vendor. And then we are also automating account balancing with FPNL and utility companies to ease the burden for the documentation. We have leveraged the partnership we have established over the years, and we are working with various nonprofits, the libraries, United Way Volunteers, Career Source, and then staff of City of West Palm Beach as well. With this agenda item, we are planning to expand our Oscars partnership with other nonprofit providers so that they can access the services for their clients. We are spending extensive time and effort on the outreach. One of the things which we are going to implement in next few weeks is the direct door mailers. We are looking at the census tract for low-income population in our community and looking at the low count of applications and doing a direct outreach to those clients so that they are aware of the services we are providing. We have sent mailers. We are doing social media posting. As James mentioned, we have a mobile outreach van in the community. Anybody can contact us directly, and we have been stationing mobile vans in the community. We are also working with Legal Aid and Florida Rural. And any client who indicate that they are having an eviction proceeding going on, those cases are directly getting referred to these two agencies. This is moving forward our ERA 2 plans, which is our additional $48 million. We are requesting the positions like Nancy mentioned because we are having a high turnover rate with our temporary staff. We are going to continue process our ERA 1, which we are expected to spend the dollars by end of October, and then start spending ERAP 2 starting from October. We are also working with Debt Helper and some housing counseling agencies to start addressing some of the repeat clients and then helping them with the counseling and the financial planning. And I definitely want to emphasize that our community services team has been doing a tremendous amount of work, and we couldn't have done that work without them. This concludes our presentation, and if you have any questions.
Certainly. Thank you for a wonderful presentation, Vice Mayor Weinroth and Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you very much. Mr. Green, I'm struck as I look at this program. I mean, certainly, it's wonderful that we have these dollars, first the CARES dollars and now the ARP money. And we're certainly able to take care of our residents who find themselves in need of assistance, both rental and utility. What I'm not seeing here is an attempt to help these people out of this problem. And I'm not seeing us leveraging Career Source. I'm not seeing us leveraging the counseling that we need to be using so that when this program does finally run its course in September 2025, that we are not left with people who have gotten used to the fact that we're here to help them through this crisis. So my question to you is, what are we doing to try and build the skill level or to reemploy the people that have been displaced by the pandemic?
So we are definitely referring people to Career Source and working with our system partners to ensure that they can move towards economic self-sufficiency. But one of the things that we're discussing internally and we're putting some measures in place is if applicants come in again for assistance, then we want to work with DebtHelper.com and other entities to make sure that they are doing budgeting and some of the financing. We're also leveraging some of our internal programs for trainings. We do a number of trainings and job placements along with Career Source and Palm Beach State College. So we'll be able to make sure that those individuals who can work can certainly access those trainings and reemployment opportunities. There are a number of individuals who are disabled, or they're seniors, or they don't have the ability to work. And so we'll continue to do what we can to provide some stability for those households. But for the others, we want to make sure that we're leveraging those opportunities.
Our philosophy with the homeless resource centers has always been that it's not a home, that it's a temporary stop to help them, again, get themselves back together, put their skill levels together, and then be placed permanently in a location where they can fend for themselves, pay their own rent. What are we doing with the people who find themselves in this program? Is there a finite amount of time when they can be asking for assistance? How are we making sure, again, that we're not giving them all of this aid and not helping them, again, become independent?
So for this particular program, we're still making sure that they are aware of the internal resources that are available to move them towards self-sufficiency. The, in terms of the parameters, the guidelines that are set by the Treasury, you know, we're maintaining that. They're able to get the 12 months of assistance if they are eligible. So we're not saying that, we are looking to ensure that the crisis still exists and that we are maintaining the eligibility requirements of the grant. But again, we are, we're discussing now to automate a process that allows individuals who do come in for additional assistance, that additional three months, to make sure that they can go to like DebtHelper.com and they do it. We have a contract with them where they do a comprehensive assessment of their finances, and they make recommendations. And then, so we have those recommendations that we can encourage them to follow.
I just, the only comment I'll make is certainly I have no problem with going forward with this. I know there's no county match required. But I just want to ensure that some of these nine people that we're bringing on board are going to have skills to, again, not just address being payment clerks and making sure that they're validly paying for expenses that have been incurred. But again, that next step of getting them out of this cycle and being able to fend for themselves.
Yeah, they will, they are providing an array of services, case management, support services to these families. Now, to say that we're able to provide services to everyone that comes in is, this is not going to be, you know, we don't have enough staff or that. But certainly the ones that can work, that we can leverage resources from our partners and internally to help move them to a point where they're financially independent, that is something that we're able to do.
And you alluded to 12 months. Is that the absolute limit of your assistance? That after 12 months, you have to stop? Or, and is there a shorter criteria that you establish? And or is it automatically 12 months?
12 months for the current program. But with the ARP or the ERA 2, they'll be able to get up to 18 months.
All right. And again, I think this is terrific. I think that we are putting a safety net out there. But I just want to make sure that we are fostering in these people the desire to get off of the, you know, the federal subsidy that we're able to provide to them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. We'll go to Commissioner Weiss and then to Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. And I, just to thank you and your staff for the great work you've done throughout almost this last, we're coming on a year and a half, almost two years. A difficult time for a lot of people, but you've been, you got, your staff has been able to rise the occasion and as these funds become available, make sure they get to the right places and people need them at the right time. And so I really appreciate that. Couple of questions. Do people receive a cash payment from these funds, or how does that work?
So the money goes directly to the landlord or to the vendor, which is a utility company vendor. Only in a scenario where the landlord is refusing to work, we are looking at giving those funds directly to the tenant. However, the tenant has to certify that they did reimburse the landlord for that unit. This is one of the federal guidelines that we should have a provision to give those funds directly to the tenant in the event landlord is refusing to work. However, we have not implemented that because we have been very successful working with the landlords. And out of those 7,800 applications, we just had one landlord who has not worked with us so far. So we are trying to keep our policy of reimbursing directly to the landlords.
So in general, these funds, people do not get a direct cash payment?
No.
This is going directly to the mortgage holder or the landlord? Or in the case of a utility company, the utility company?
Correct.
Pay the bill and that. I think that's very important. And then, how do people apply? Where, if people need assistance, how do, where do they apply? How do they do that?
So they can go to our website, PBCgov.com/CommunityServices, and look for the link. It's right there. Or we have a rentalassistancepbc.org link. They can go there. They can go to any of our library sites, all of our seven nonprofit agency sites, our mobile unit sites, and either they can apply it themselves or one of our staff can help them do the application for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. Sort of a strange observation, but you have, nine positions are needed to manage the program through the year 2025, and we will be eliminated if funding is no longer available. So my question is, are these permanent positions or are these temporary full-time positions?
So they are permanent position, but these are grant-funded positions. So positions go away when grant goes away. So this grant, ERAP 2 funding, is all the way till 2025. If you do not get any new funding after that, these positions will go away or through attrition, we can absorb it in our department.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. We'll move now to comments by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one public comment cards, card from Tracy Pujol.
Good afternoon, Tracy. Recognized for three minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tracy Pujol. I live at 11805 Hawk Hollow. I'm the one that have emailed all the commissioners and the mayor of the family crisis. My roof fell in July the 9th. Mold in the house. I have mold in my body now. My kids are finna be tested for mold. I have reached out to Commissioner McKinley's office. I have spoken with James. And we're still living in the house. We have been raining since July the 9th. You all are voted in by the community. And there's no way that I had to come here from Lakewood, hot as it is, with lupus in my body, disabled, trying to seek some help for me and my kids. I'm tired of dealing with Mr. Green. For one month and one week I have. Back and forth over the phone. They want to put me in Motel 6. I live way on the west side of Homeland in Lakewood. They want to take me to Motel 6 and my kids wait on the east side somewhere. I don't know about Palm Beach County. I don't know about the areas. I found the place in Locksahatchee. I'm on Section 8. The landlord didn't give me the place because of this staff here, how nasty they were. I moved my kids' school from Wellington to Locksahatchee. I transferred my lights and didn't get the place. Now I have to transport my kids to Locksahatchee from Lakewood. I'm tired. We inhaling mold still. It's raining in there. The place is a mess. Mr. Green have been there, and he have seen. He came to my house and he have seen the conditions we have been living in. Why are we still living in those conditions? Why are me and my kids still living in those conditions? Yesterday, I told him, back and forth. I can show you my phone. His personal cell. All a whole month and one week, nothing has given. I spoke to Mr. Sophie. He assured me that something's gonna happen. I'm still living in those same conditions. Last night, yesterday, I just got so tired of talking to him about different things. Thursday, my doctor called me and told me, I got lupus in my body already. I'm disabled. He said, you've been tested positive for mold. You need to take your kids and you need to get out of there. I called Mr. Green and told him exactly what the doctor said. Thursday went, he went back and forth. Send me a hotel in the area where you at. Send me, I send them Airbnbs. I can show you my phone. I did all this. Why do I have to continue to go through this here?
Ma'am.
Thursday went, Friday went.
Ma'am, we are all sensitive to your situation, and your time has expired. I am aware that several county commissioners and their offices have attempted to work with you to find temporary housing, and I would continue to encourage you to work with our staff. We cannot unilaterally fix the conditions that you live in, but we are here and remain willing to. willing to assist you in temporary housing and further down the road in any way that we can help. So, I appreciate your comments here today, but your time has expired. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Mr. Green, can you give us an update on that particular situation?
Absolutely. So, we have been working with Ms. Pujol. I don't know what's appropriate in terms of giving, you know, specific information, but certainly with the transitional portion, if we are able to assist her in moving into a place, which is the most difficult part about this, is finding a permanent residence, we certainly will and have. We've already gone through the approval process and the proper... And committed to a very high deposit amount and that failed through. And I do not agree with the assessment that it failed through on our staff's behalf. But, I would also say that, you know, as recent as yesterday, that a hotel was indeed offered. And I think there was a mix-up. I know that she did go to the hotel and they had a payment. It is still available for her. I just... And it was one that she chose, which is something that we don't normally do, but it was within the price range. And she got there and it wasn't to her standards and so...
You do want to mention about the card?
All right. Very good.
There are a number of other services that have been provided, including assistance with rent, food cards and a number of other things as well.
Mr. Green, I'm going to ask you to step outside of your comfort zone for a moment because the constituent has very clearly stated the... Her facts around this case, very detailed on the record. So, I'm going to ask you, very detailed on the record, to explain what you've done.
Okay. So, I have gone into the home and I've observed the home.
You liar!
It is a case that is very sensitive. I've actually called the case in to other authorities to get involved as well. So, I've done that. Again, there's records available where she has access to a hotel to get her out of the situation temporarily. She is going through the legal system to address the issue with the property owner. I've spoken with the property owner personally and tried to negotiate and try to get some assistance. The property owner wants her gone and is adamant about not doing anything with the place. So, I've worked with her to try to get her legal representation, which she has. She has court coming up next week to try to resolve that. And we've provided so many other different types of services for her, which is outside of the realm of what we would normally do. This is not a case that we would normally work with, but certainly I'm sensitive to the issues that she's going through and want to do what we can to assist.
Are there any life safety issues that are presented in the property she's currently residing in that code enforcement can address and condemn the property?
Code enforcement has been involved. They, just as recent as last week, they went out with the property owner and addressed some of the issues on the outside of the property. Well, I won't say addressed. They basically covered a pool that was infested. But, as far as the inside, they have not been involved, but it's my understanding that they will be involved once she goes to court on the 24th to try to mediate and resolve these issues.
Okay. Why haven't they been inside to look at the inside of the facility?
I'm not... I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure why they haven't looked at the inside of the facility, but I think the reason I've looked to get other entities involved that would look at the inside of the facility to determine if there are safety issues is because I do think that there are some issues that need to be addressed, just to say the least.
Okay. And if the home was condemned, what would the tenants' options be at that point?
We will continue to work with them, but if child welfare was in the picture, then they have resources that they can leverage to assist as well. So, that would normally be the case, where they would come in, assess whether or not there are issues that present safety problems for any vulnerable population, including kids. And then, they have a protocol that would be put in place to either place them, working with us, or working with their resources to place them temporarily until they can get the issue resolved.
Okay. I'm looking at Mr. Rutter or Mr. Bulkeley, who oversees code enforcement. Can either one of you answer that question, why the inside of this home has not been inspected by code enforcement?
So, typically, in order to gain access to a house, we need legal entry. If they were not... If we're denied that, we just can't go in. So... And the flip side to that, too, is, once we do go in, we have to cite the property owner. I'm not sure if she's the property owner or not, so it doesn't give an instant fix. But, that's the issue, is trying to get inside.
But, if conditions warranted, you could condemn the property?
Correct. I'd have to get inspection warrant to get inside to then have building and fire go look at it to condemn it.
And is the landlord unwilling to allow you that legal entry?
I... I'll have to look at the specifics of this case. I'm not sure.
Okay.
But, I can look at that.
Okay. And then, my last question, has anybody put the tenant in touch with her school board member to help transfer those students so she doesn't have to drive to Loxahatchee?
Yes. So, we've... I've referred her to the McKinney-Vento program, which I thought was most appropriate. So, they've been working with her to, you know, make transportation arrangements for the kids, no matter where they go, if they're moved to a hotel or where they are. So, I know that she's working on that as well. As far as a school board member, no. I've not made any referrals to any specific school board members.
Okay. I believe she's either Karen Brill or Marsha Andrews, and if someone could direct her into that situation. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to ask a few questions on that. This just highlights a very difficult situation that we're put in, when really what's going on is a landlord-tenant disagreement and we are offering the resources that we have. I mean, they're pretty much Holiday Inn or Motel Sixes, which are clean hotels, but, you know, they're not the high-end Hiltons or Ritz-Carltons. And we do the best we can with the resources we have and it's up to the constituent to accept what's being offered and that's not being accepted right now in an otherwise private matter that should be litigated in the court system. But, we'll... Mr. Green, I guess we'll continue to do whatever we can and direct the resources that we have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized.
I want to ask, there's a court hearing set for this week or next week?
The 24th.
The 24th. Is the county involved in that?
No. This is between her attorney and the property owner.
She has an attorney?
She has several attorneys.
Okay. I don't need to discuss it anymore. If she has an attorney, then I just would make sure that whoever is representing her, if they could, make sure they contact the county so that we can let them know our findings from the inspection that our people did. Because we should be... If this is against a landlord who's not taking care of property located in the county, then her attorney should know that it's been inspected and the results of that inspection. Would you look into that, Mr. Green?
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. That concludes comments by members of the public and questions by members of the board. Mr. Green, thank you for your efforts and to the entire team, both on this issue and then the larger gen item before us. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move 6C1A, B, C, and D.
Motion by Vice Mayor Wainrath on 6C1A, B, C, and D is published. Seconded by Commissioner Moreno. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6C1 passes 7 to 0. Thank you. We're now still on Community Services, 6C2, related to notice of funding opportunity and financially assisted agencies.
Thank you, Mayor. This item seeks to recommend the fiscal year 2022 financially assisted agency program allocations. Staff issued a notice of funding opportunity in the categories of behavioral health, homelessness, and domestic violence and sheltering. And they do have a brief presentation for you if it is your pleasure.
Certainly, the board takes interest in financially assisted agencies, but I'll defer to other members of the board if they...
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and move Item 6C2A and B for approval.
Motion by Vice Mayor Wainrath, seconded by Commissioner McKinley on item 6C2A and B as published. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6C2 passes 7 to 0. Still on Community Services, 6C3, regarding five full-time equivalent grant-funded positions.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. You have my word that this is the last item requesting positions and it's not typically our practice to do this outside the budget process. However, staff, you know, has worked very hard with temps over the last year with COVID and they... Based on the volume of calls, they are proposing five-time... Excuse me, five full-time equivalent grant-funded positions for the purpose of staffing a centralized call center to address the intake and services around the callers that are on a 24/7 basis. And they're here also with a brief presentation or to answer any questions if it's your pleasure.
Mayor, I'm going to move 6C3, which also has a proviso that no county funds will be required.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Wainrath, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6C3 passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much to Community Services. Been stalwart during this very difficult time and we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for Item 6D1A, B, C, and C, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6D1A, B, and C and state that these are federal home program grant funds, which require 25% local match by state ship grant funds.
Second.
Very good. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
I just have a question. Is this the one where we received the email this week that we were under a cone of silence with also the Calusa Project?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. No, Commissioner McKinley, this is the first RFP. This is for the 9% tax credit. The email that I sent out yesterday is for a different RFP.
Okay. Thanks.
Very good. That concludes questions by members of the board. The motion has been made on 6D1A, B, and C as published by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No further comment by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6D1 passes 7 to 0. 6D2.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Brown, Department of Housing and Economic Development, here to present 6D2, item for our ship 2122 fiscal year. And we can answer any questions or make a presentation if you'd like. The recommendations were unanimously supported by the Commission on Affordable Housing.
Thank you. Commissioner requested presentation on 6D2.
Move 6D2A and B.
Very good. There's a motion made by Vice Mayor Wainrath, seconded by Commissioner Moreno on 6D2A and B as published. There's no comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6D2A and B passes 7 to 0. We're on 6D3.
Mr. Mayor, on Item 63, if none of the commissioners wishes to have a presentation, I make a motion to approve Item 63A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Vice Mayor Wainrath on 6D3A, B, C, D, and E as published. There's no comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6D3 passes 7 to 0. Now, on 6D4.
Mr. Mayor, with none of the commissioners wishes to have a presentation, I make a motion to approve Item 6D4A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Very good. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Weiss on 6D4A, B, C, D, and E as published. No comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6D4 passes 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Housing and Economic Development. We're now on Water Utilities on 6E1, regarding a settlement agreement and Amendment Number 2 to reclaim water agreement.
Mayor, I believe we've all been given a update on this and I would be prepared to move 6E1 forward if we're approval.
Is there any questions by members of the board on 6E1? Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Weiss and motion made by Vice Mayor Wainrath on 6E1. No further comments by members of the board. All in favor? We do have a public comment card. My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, we just have a non-public speaking comment card from Mr. Don Kozlowski from FPNO.
Very good. I assume you're here for any questions if the board had. It looks like all is in order. So, again, 6E1 has been made by Vice Mayor Wainrath, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0 on 6E1. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continued on to Water Utilities. No, that's still 61, so that's been passed in full. 6F1, Facilities Development and Operations, regarding a license agreement with Hive Home Incorporated.
Seeing no discussion, I will move 6F1A and B for approval.
Very good. The motion has been made on 6F1 by Vice Mayor Wainrath, is seconded by Commissioner Weiss. No comments by members of the public or members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6F1 passes 7 to 0. Still with Facilities Development Operations and 6F2, regarding concessionaire service agreement at Hawk Haven LLC.
I'll make a motion that we adopt and approve. 6F2A and B.
Motion been made by Commissioner Moreno on 6F2A and B as published, seconded by Vice Mayor Wainrath. No comments by members of the public or members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6F2 passes 7 to 0. 6F3, Facilities Development and Operations, regarding an amended, restated communications tower joint use agreement. Can't imagine there's a presentation on this.
I see no light, so 6F3, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Very good. Motion made by Vice Mayor Wainrath on 6F3A and B as published, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no public comment or comments by members of the board. All in favor? All opposed? 6F3 passes 7 to 0. We're on 6F4, regarding the conveyance of interest of .104 acres to the Florida Department Transportation. Now, this is related to the HRC2, so if you wouldn't mind just giving a brief overview of what this is hoping to accomplish.
That is correct. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. It's Mia Jella, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. With me here today is Ms. Purbi Bhugaiya, Director of PRM, Division of Property and Real Estate Management. I will let her provide you an overview of the item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, we are asking, excuse me, for your approval of the conveyance of a .1 acre parcel to FDOT for the creation of a turn lane on Lake Worth Road to benefit the Homeless Resource Center located in Lake Worth Beach. We are also requesting approval of a utility easement in favor of the city of Lake Worth Beach for the relocation of the utility lines that serve our facility there and approval of a license agreement for the roadway improvements related to the turn lane. In June 2019, the board directed staff to explore options to find direct vehicular access to the HRC2 via Lake Worth Road. This item brings closure to that direction. FDOT shall design and construct a turn lane as an extension to its own forthcoming improvements on Lake Worth Road, which is under jurisdictional control of FDOT. The estimated cost is approximately $104,000, which the Transportation Planning Agency has agreed to pay. The .1 acre being conveyed is for the location of the proposed turn lane. The city of Lake Worth Beach provides electrical services to the facility. To accommodate the proposed turn lane, existing power lines will need to be relocated by the city, hence the need for the utility easement in their favor. The license agreement is related to the turn lane construction. It just allows FDOT to harmonize the future improvements with existing improvements so that, you know, all the improvements tie in well together. Is there any other questions?
If I may add, this item that we're bringing from your consideration for approval today is basically a follow-up or the result of some direction we were given back in 2019 when this project was approved, which was to try to identify and coordinate for other access options, not relying on Coconut Road and Gulf Stream. Okay?
Very good. And I know that both myself and the members of the community that I represent appreciate... appreciate you acting on that direction because it will have much less an impact as HRC2 goes online. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. Thank you for all you do. So, we're making a right turn lane, and we are also transferring the utility box because we're moving the lane, so that gets in the way of the utility box. So, we have to move those utility boxes. Is that an FPNL utility box?
That's related to the, they're the city's utilities. So, the city will be relocating all of the utilities that are in the existing roadway right now so that they're out of the turn lane.
And so who pays for the transfer of the utilities, city utilities?
I believe the county would be.
The county will?
As part of our project.
Part of our project, right?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move forward. 6F4A, B, C, D, and E for approval.
Very good. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss on Agenda Item 6F4A, B, C, D, and E as published. There's no further comments by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed. Item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Facilities Development and Operations on 6F. Oh, no, that includes them. Now on Airports, 6G1 with regards to Amendment Number Six, General Consulting Agreement with ACOM Technical Services.
F4?
I think that was a continuation of the prior.
Yeah, that was a continuation.
It's just a very long agenda item, I think.
We're on 6G1.
Five for approval, which we had.
Also, it's F4. Yeah, and then there's just more backup on it. All right, very good. We're on 6F4. I'm sorry.
6G1.
6G1, airports. Laura, Director of Airports, Laura Beebe, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. We're requesting approval of an amendment to the agreement with ACOM Technical Services in the amount of $1,583,691.58 to complete the following tasks, including improvement to Green Streets, which is Green Street, which is to improve the turning radius from Military Trail to Green Street. Phase two construction services for the Wallace Road construction, which is currently ongoing. Wind cone relocation replacement project to ensure compliance with FAA siting criteria. An update to our stormwater prevention plan, which includes annual inspections of tenant facilities to verify activities and sources of stormwater pollution, inspections of drainage structures, inspection report, and compliance follow-up. It also includes an update to the stormwater master plan for the Palm Beach International Airport based on the intermediate forecast, which is projects within the next 10 years. Update to the PBI noise report to do the 2020 noise contours. This also includes repair, a long-term management, a long-term maintenance program, which will include a site evaluation, development of plans and technical specification, construction documents necessary for completion of the work, including the preparation, development of contract documents, and bid and construction services for the PBI parking garages. It also includes similar work for the PBI terminal and the James L. Turnage Bridges, which are a total of seven bridges that are connected to the facilities. The consultant will identify any deficiencies, and those will be addressed as part of these work programs. Depending on the nature of the repairs, these maintenance programs may be implemented in one or more phases. This also includes disadvantaged business program outreach services and miscellaneous planning and engineering services. And if you have any questions, that's the end of my.
Motion?
Motion to approve 6G1, which is on our agenda today because it's over $325,000 and is required by Chapter 332 for us to approve today.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. 6G1. No comments by members of the public or members of the board. All in favor, all opposed. 6G1 passes seven to zero. We're on Airport 6G2 related to construction manager risk contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, if any Commissioners do not need a presentation, I make a motion to approve Items 6G2A and B.
All right, very good. And Commissioner Bernard has made the motion on 6G2A and B as published, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. There's no comments by members of the board. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes seven to zero. We're on Airport 6G3 related to ground transportation management system software services.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 6G3.
6G3 has been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're now into the County Attorney's Office related to employment contract for legal services with Lori Denise Kaufman Esquire, who has been previously selected as our next county attorney.
Mr. Mayor, we've all had meetings with our soon-to-be county attorney, and I would like to move 6H1 for approval.
Very good. I'll recognize Commissioner McKinley. The motion was made by Vice Mayor Weinroth. Is there a second for the time being? Commissioner Weiss. Very good. Commissioner McKinley?
I just think we should postpone this for more than 11 weeks so the current county attorney can't leave.
Are we trying to indenture servitude her?
Yeah.
Oh, did you have any comments, ma'am? We've all been briefed. We've all had our input individually with you.
Thank you.
Very good. So, the motion's been made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. All in favor, all opposed. That item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're on Agenda Item 6I1 related to $75,000 allocation to community, related to the community identification card program. By way of background, this Board had directed administration to bring this item to the Board from a past meeting where we had some tangential discussion of it, but we wanted a full and larger discussion today. So, we are here. I'll turn it over to Dorit Miller, who's our Assistant County Administrator. I'm delighted to have Colonel John Preschell from Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office as well. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Administrator Baker. So, we do have a very brief presentation just to lay it out and to give it a perspective, the background information. So, at the table, again, I'm Dorit. I'm Dorit Miller, Assistant County Administrator. To my left is Regina Herring, the Criminal Justice Commission Executive Director. We have Chief Preschell with us representing the Sheriff's Office, and Jean Williams, who is the county attorney for CJC. So, just as a way of background and information, in late 2017, the Board of County Commissioners requested the Criminal Justice Commission review the community identification card program proposal that was presented by the Peace Community. I'm sorry, the clicker?
The remote's right there.
The remote?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the first slide. Okay, we're good. We're good. The right? It's up. It's up. So, this, we go back to 2017, okay? The CJC established an ad hoc committee to perform this review. The committee reviewed the proposed program, all the similar community identification programs, the requirements to obtain a Florida driver's license and identification card, as well as consular identification cards. Next slide. Some of the benefits that were identified in the 2017 report were reduction in jail to those eligible for a notice to appear but arrested instead due to not having a valid ID. Also, there was a reduction in law enforcement resources needed to transport arrestees. And another benefit was to increase employment for individuals, or actually to provide more opportunity for individuals who needed an ID card to access gated communities to go to work. There were some concerns that were expressed. Public records exposure for individuals provided this ID if project was funded with public dollars. Law enforcement voiced the need for the retention of documents as a means to verify the integrity of the issuance of the card and to inspect the documents if an ID card was used in a fraudulent or criminal matter. The other concern expressed was the potential for fraud, use of counterfeit documents to obtain an ID in another person's name, or counterfeit in themselves, and then using to commit criminal acts. In terms of operation, in February of 2019, the city of West Palm Beach awarded $40,000 to the Legal Aid of Palm Beach County to implement the community ID program card, ID card program, sorry. In its first year, Legal Aid issued approximately 3,000 community ID cards. In 2020, the number dropped significantly to 100, primarily due to funding shortfalls as the funding to West Palm Beach was a one-time funding, and also due to the pandemic. Legal Aid estimates approximately 75% to 90% of these cards were issued to undocumented members of the community. Each ID card costs $20. It expires in one year, and it is renewable thereafter. The city of West Palm Beach, Lake Worth Beach, and Belgrade passed resolutions to accept the community ID cards for access to city services such as library use, such as getting a library card, a secondary form of ID for utilities, and admissions to city events. The city of West Palm Beach Police Department just recently confirmed that in some cases, they recognize the ID cards for minor offenses in lieu of physical arrests. The Legal Aid Society stated that guardians' credit union, local pharmacies, county libraries, and the healthcare district accept these ID cards. The Sheriff's Office still does not support the ID card program in its current form, and we have Colonel Preschell here for any questions that you may have.
Very good. I know we have a robust amount of comment cards from members of the public. Going into this, Colonel Preschell, I know you're here on behalf of the sheriff and the Sheriff's Office. There are some concerns about fraud, and you and I have had discussed this issue over the years as we've both been involved in it. Are we, does the sheriff, or do you, or the agency as a whole, have enough information on how these IDs are issued and the veracity of the identification process versus other programs throughout the United States? Yeah, there's a button there right on the bottom.
We on?
Yes, sir.
That sounds a little better. Yeah, our primary concern really right now is that we don't have enough information about the program. And we're, we understand the benefits. We're not here to dispute the benefits of the program because the benefits are pretty sound. We did start studying the model program, the national model program out of Greensboro, North Carolina in the spring of this year. We started doing some research for that program, and we saw that there is a significant law enforcement footprint to that program. And that program is really about partnering the community with law enforcement and really trying to establish some trust, and also some buy-in into accepting the IDs that are actually issued. And right here in this presentation, the West Palm Beach Police Department only accepts the ID in some cases. And our primary concern is that there is no law enforcement footprint to this program, to this local program. We've done some pretty good research on the Faith Action Program up in Greensboro, North Carolina, and our concern is, one, that we don't have enough information on the local program, and, two, we can see just, it's right there in plain sight that there's no law enforcement involved. And we want to be involved. If the sheriff is going to endorse it and the sheriff is going to support it, we certainly need to make sure that our law enforcement partners in this county, all 26 municipalities, are on board as well. And we want to make sure that we understand the program and that we're part of the rollout, we're part of the issuance, we're part of the identification drives that are put on. But we also want to make sure that we are partnering with, one, the community and the nonprofits, but also that we're rolling out an internal training program so that our deputies understand that when they come across this identification, that some of those benefits that we're just outlining in this presentation can, really can be afforded. So, if we're looking to possibly accept the identification, I understand to open up bank accounts and to get vaccinations and things like that, but if we're looking to save the possibility of having to transport someone to the county jail and trying to avoid a custodial arrest, and we issue a notice to appear instead, then I think it would behoove us to make sure that law enforcement is fully on board with what kind of identification is being issued out, making sure that we all understand it, and making sure that we're communicating that with the public. So, that in a nutshell is where we stand. The sheriff isn't here to dispute the benefits. He's not, he doesn't even take the position of disputing the benefits of the program. His whole issue, along with mine, is to make sure that we understand what the program's all about. And if we're going to partner with a nonprofit, we're going to partner with the community, then we ought to have a seat at the table because right now, we're not even at the table. We've got calls into Legal Aid trying to get more information, not getting calls back. We've done multiple calls with Peace, and I believe Legal Aid was involved with that as well. Our most recent phone call, our most recent meeting was the sheriff and I met with Peace, and they wanted him to blindly support the program and blindly endorse it. And he said, listen, I'm not here, I'm not here to tell you that the program's not good. I'm not here to tell you that I'm not on board with the program. We just need to learn more about it and make sure we've got the information that we need to go forward. And that's where we left it. And since then, we've been doing a research and the studying of other programs, and we can see the differences between the national model program and what's being done locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. And hopefully, this opportunity here today to have a public hearing on it and have Ms. Coe from Legal Aid here today and members of Peace and all the stakeholders to help teach us and the Sheriff's Office as the primary law enforcement agency in the county a little bit more about how this process is done. I'm delighted to hear that the Sheriff's Office recognizes some of the tangential benefits aside from right now an inability to release on your own recognizance or through an NTA versus custodial arrest. But there were mentions of pharmacies, the healthcare district, the libraries. In some instances, the largest municipal agency in West Palm Beach Police have allowed their officers the discretion to release on what I would assume are very minor traffic charges or possession of marijuana or something like that. So, there are other benefits to this, but really, the utility from my perspective is what Colonel Preschell talked about, was that buy-in, that community dialogue, and that partnership between law enforcement and those underrepresented members of our community who cannot access a normal government ID, and help build the relationship between that population and the Sheriff's Office. So, I do see some lights that will go into some questions, and then we'll get to public comment. Vice Mayor Weinroth and then Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's not going to be a surprise to you that I have some real misgivings about this program. I've had this conversation with Peace. I've had this conversation when we brought this forward last time. And, you know, I find it interesting, Commissioner Sacks put a memo out to all of us on August 16th where she referenced a community event coming up on September 18th, which, in my view, is a much better solution to what we're talking about here, which is getting people properly identified. And just to quote from her memorandum, she's basically saying that her office is joining with Congresswoman Lois Frankel so that they are able to work with the consulates, five consulates from Miami, so that they can get proper identification of their residents, and so we can have a bona fide identification of these people. My problem is, every time this has been brought forward, there's such a blurring of lines between where it's going to be used and where it's not going to be used. And I'm just going to, you know, when I had a conversation with Representatives for Peace, they gave me an anecdotal story about, well, someone drives up to the HOA or gated community and can't get in, but they have this ID, and that could get them in. And I'm thinking to myself, why are they driving a car? I'm afraid that people are going to be, number one, this is ripe for identity theft. I, as well-meaning as the people are who are ready- As well-meaning as the people are who are ready to administer this program, this is not a program that is state-administered. I see our tax collector is here, she administers a program for state-issued IDs. You don't have to be a driver to have a state-issued ID. There are specific criteria for her to vet the individual, and if they have the proper identification, she will issue them a state-issued ID which will then permit them to, again, have the proper identification, open up a bank account, to do whatever we each take for granted because we have identification. But to say that someone's going to have this ID and go into Wachovia or any one of, Wells, I'm dating myself, into Wells Fargo or any one of our banks and try and open up an account is not what these IDs are supposed to be for, and if they are used for that, that's a misuse of these IDs. I'm really concerned about the county putting money into this program. If Legal Aid feels that this is a good program for them to get behind, that's great. They should solicit funds from the community, from the nonprofits, from members of Peace, and they should do this program with the understanding that it may or may not be approved as an identification. In my conversations with the sheriff, I asked him point-blank, "If one of your officers pulls someone over, are they going to accept this ID as the difference between arresting them and booking them into jail or letting them just go with a notice of appearance?" And he said, "No." That was his answer. This will not satisfy the criteria for stopping the sheriff's deputies from saying, "This is a situation where I need to act and I need to restrain this person or put him into jail," or whatever. The absence of the ID, the community ID, is not going to change the decision that the sheriff's deputy is going to make. I think that the idea of having an identification, obviously, every one of us sitting at this dais has ID, we know it's necessary to get in this building. So I don't minimize the need for the ID, and I certainly have no problem with the Peace or with Legal Aid or anybody who wants to try and facilitate this program. I do have problems with the county putting its own approval on this by putting the money into the, into the program. Again, if someone has the necessary documentation, I know our tax collector, Ann Gannon, will be more than happy to facilitate the issuance of a state-issued ID. Otherwise, I think that we really should not be approving this, and that's my position and it always has been. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. We'll go now to Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, and I agree with the sheriff's assessment on not accepting it if you pull somebody over. To Commissioner Weinroth's point, they shouldn't be driving, so that that is not the use of the ID. Colonel Preschel, it's really awesome to see you sitting here and be able to call you Colonel, see you rising through the ranks, so.
Thank you so much.
First and foremost, congratulations on your, on your rise. It's well-deserved.
Thank you.
Let's take a little different perspective here. We've got more than 3,000 of these IDs floating in our community as we speak. Are you aware of any issues we've had with them so far?
I'm not aware of anything specific, no.
Okay. So if we were to award this grant to the Legal Aid Society and allow the program to continue in its very limited purview right now, wouldn't that allow you the opportunity to continue to study what we're doing locally versus the model program out of Greensboro and allow you some time to, to come to your own conclusion?
It would seem to me that we'd be putting the cart before the horse, with all due respect, because I think that we, if we could study the program locally, because we also have some information that the local program has pledged with Faith Action up in Greensboro, North Carolina, that they would be running a program the same way and the same manner, and that's one of our concerns. It would allow us to partner with Legal Aid and really start to work with them so that we could try to get some of our other law enforcement partners on board to try to see if this could be a better, more successful, more thriving program. As it stands right now, we're just issuing cards out and cards that aren't really being accepted, and there might be some minimal benefit to it, because we're certainly not going to argue the fact that they can't go into a bank and not open an account or get vaccinated or do some other things, but that's, that's our position on it.
Okay. I'm still in favor of supporting this very small grant to Legal Aid Society to continue the program and allow us the opportunity to improve it. I think you're not going to be able to walk into a Wells Fargo, there are federal regulations, which is why you only see Guardian on here as an agency accepting it because it's a credit union, but I think it allows some protection. I know we're hyper-focused on the undocumented segment of the population, but it is providing benefits to others outside of that. It's worthy to continue the program and allow us the opportunity to improve it and make it better.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sacks, did you have comments?
Yes, I want to wait.
Okay, very good. Then we'll go then to Commissioner Weiss and then Commissioner Bernard.
I'll wait till after. I want to hear the comments first.
I just have a question for the Colonel.
Sure.
So I just, understanding, understanding and listening to your concerns, so you're saying that, that Legal Aid will not work with you?
I'm sorry, I have a difficult time understanding.
You stated Legal Aid won't work with the sheriff's office, is?
We've got several calls into them, and we're trying to get more information, and as recent as late yesterday afternoon, we're still waiting on return phone calls.
And when did you start trying to contact them?
We started researching the program in the spring, so we've been trying to reach Legal Aid since then. I can't say exactly how many times my staff has called, but I could certainly get that answer for you.
And then I guess, now I should have wrote down my question, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll come back to it.
And then we'll go to Commissioner Marino, and then a public comment.
Thank you. I'll save my comments for the comment section, but for this moment, Colonel Preschel, it's nice to see you again. It's been a long time since you, since leadership.
Thank you.
The Greensboro program, do we know who funds that program? Is it funded by the nonprofit?
I don't know who currently funds it, no.
Okay. Because the program that has been, another program that has been brought to our attention, the MARCC program is funded through the nonprofit, not by the county. So I'm just trying to figure out why the county or this agency would be funding it when in other instances it's being funded by the nonprofits. They're spearheading the program, they're funding the program. So that's just one of my questions. And in the documentation that you have given us, Dorit, on the last page where it says "Program Summary," what documentation is required to receive an ID, which I believe is part of the Community ID Program? It does say consular ID. Is that correct?
This information came from the Legal Aid website, right, Virginia?
It actually came from the Legal Aid representative.
Okay, and I believe they're here today?
Yes.
Okay. Because if I'm not mistaken, Colonel Preschel, we do accept consular ID if someone is stopped?
We do.
Okay.
Commissioner, if I could go back to one point, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if I go back to one point where you had asked about who funded, were you talking about the local program or the program that we studied nationally?
The program you studied nationally.
It's funded by nonprofit.
Okay, thank you. Then going back to the consular ID, it is accepted, but, so if the consular ID is accepted, why do we also need a community ID? So just, I'm just, you know, going from what a consular ID is, and it's, and also, Maria, thank you for your, your notice. I mean, I said a long time ago that we should be, if anything, we should be funding a program that helps people here get their consular ID, because then it's a legitimate form of identification that you can use going forward. So I'll save my comments for later, but that, thank you for telling me the funding is from the nonprofit, because I have also suggested to Peace that this should be funded through the nonprofits or through their, their churches and other religious institutions. So thank you. I have no more questions.
I have a question related to Commissioner Marino. There seems to be two issues of identification. One is identifying in the context of law enforcement, the violator or the accused, right? Where a consular ID would be helpful in determining the actual identity of that person.
Yes.
Then there's the issue of whether that identification would be utilized in determining whether there's sufficient community ties, if in the context of a traffic stop and they were driving without a license, to make the decision whether to issue a notice to appear or take them into custody. Is that fair?
Correct, yes. It's a two-prong test.
Right.
One is for identification and identity, for identity purposes, the other one is for residency.
So in the context of avoiding a custodial arrest, which is a stated goal, or reducing jail population is a stated goal of the Board of County Commissioners, how could a consular ID be useful in that scenario if it doesn't show any sufficient ties to the community?
That in and of itself, obviously, wouldn't necessarily be able to establish residency unless they had some other supporting documentation with them, but our whole question is the legitimacy of the local ID being issued to begin with.
If the community ID was obtained through the presentation of a consular ID, would that give more sufficient confidence in, because I'm not sure that everyone has a consular ID, and I think that may be bearing down into the deeper issue of this, that there are folks in our community that don't have these IDs, and not everyone can get a community or a state of Florida ID, especially under the new real ID program where you have to have a consular ID to get it, or your passport, or some naturalization documents. So in the context of what we're trying to avoid collectively, I think, which is custodial arrest for minor offenses, the mere presentation of a consular ID is not going to change the sheriff's office or the deputy's decision to take them into custody for a drive-in while without a license.
I believe that the issue here is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we're talking about the one-prong, we're not necessarily talking about the residency requirement. And if we could get involved and partner with Legal Aid and have a seat at the table, I don't think the sheriff would be opposed to supporting the program.
Okay.
Because I think he wants to find a way to possibly support it, but he doesn't want to do it blindly, and who can blame him? So I think that we need to get a seat at the table, we need to be part of the partnership, because if it's a partnership, then we ought to be there. And if there's something that we can do to help with authenticating the ID and making sure that there's good, sound documentation being provided to establish residency, then maybe we get there. At this point, we don't really know what's being accepted, what's not.
Okay. Is it still the practice of law enforcement to take a fingerprint if there's a notice to appear given unseen?
Not in all cases.
No? Okay. All right, were there further questions by members of the board? Commissioner Weiss?
Sorry. Okay, now, here's where I was. When people come out of prison or jail, are they provided IDs?
I don't know that.
My understanding is they don't.
Yeah.
So if somebody got out of jail or prison and they were stopped, they'd have no ID, they couldn't identify themselves to law enforcement, you'd be, you'd take them in.
If they came into the correctional facility with identification, then obviously that would be returned to them upon their release.
Right, but some people spend a long time in there and they don't, it's no longer, no longer be valid, so.
An expired identification is probably better than no identification at all. I think we'd all would probably agree with that.
Right, but it is sort of odd, though, that, you know, especially if people have been housed in correction facilities for multiple years, that they come out without IDs. When the state knows exactly who they are, it seems like it would make sense that they would issue them an ID, but they don't. And so my understanding is, is that this program does provide for people, both formerly incarcerated people, homeless people, people, seniors who don't live in HOAs, because I know seniors live in HOAs, use their HOA ID to go and pick up their prescriptions at the drugstore. So, but if you don't live in an HOA, you don't have that picture ID to be able to get your prescription.
Yeah. I'm certainly not here to say that this identification could not be helpful in some of those circumstances, but even the elderly population that gives up their driver's license, it switches over to an ID card.
If, well, I have the, what's required to get a real ID in the state, and I know our tax collector is here, and I'm not going to, I don't want to bore everybody with reading it, but it's quite extensive, and I think a lot of seniors, certainly homeless people, formerly incarcerated people, would have a very difficult time pulling this information together within any kind of short timeframe. A lot of times, this stuff would have to be ordered, mailed, so I have real concerns. I share your concerns, and I would hope that you would have a seat at the table. I'm really surprised that you haven't been included in the conversations.
We're trying to find ourselves at the table. We are, we are making every reasonable attempt that we can to get there.
I, and I would be delighted to help you get there.
Very good. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Colonel Preschel, for being here. You know, one of the questions that I'm struggling with is, like, the fact that you're saying that the sheriff is not, doesn't have a seat at the table. Like, I feel like we've been having this conversation in regards to this community ID for over five years now, and so I'm struggling to hear that, you know, that you're not at the table, that, because it, to me, it's just like, I'm baffled that, you know, that the sheriff is not at the table, and I really want to hear from, you know, Peace and Legal Aid Society to find out exactly what is truly, truly going on, or, you know, or does the sheriff not, does not want to be at the table at all? So I'm just, I'm not sure, because it doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Commissioner, with all due respect, I can tell you that it's a command-level staff member that works directly for me that has been trying to reach them. She's been involved in this research process and studying these programs all along, so I know specifically who's trying to reach who. It baffles us to some degree as well that we would like to make sure that we partner and we work together, but I can also tell you that of all the ID drives that have taken place, I don't know that we've ever been there to one of them, not one of them yet. If we have, I'd like to, I'd like to hear about it. So we haven't been to any of the drives, and the Faith Action Program out of Greensboro, North Carolina specifically calls for that level of involvement, and we don't have that involvement. We, I was in the meeting with the sheriff the last time we met with Peace, so I know what was said, and I paid very close attention to what was being said on both sides, and I can tell you that he said, "Listen, we're going to research the program and we'd like to learn more about the program that you have here, and we have some of the information that's been shared, some of the online documents," but that's different than sitting down and having conversations and actually working in partnership with each other. Big difference.
All right, we'll go to public comment. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have Ann Gannon, followed by Vanessa Coe.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to hopefully clarify some questions and com- some questions and confusion that seems to arise over this program. First of all, let me explain to you, we work very closely with the Department of Corrections for people in a pre-release program on soon-to-release inmates for the requirements for either a driver's license or a Florida ID card. They are in this workshop prior to release from the system, and our Belgrade manager has participated in many of these workshops to actually walk the inmate through the process that is required for them to receive one of these two issues. And both DL and ID clients need the required real ID documentation. And you know it's a primary document. It's either a birth certificate or a passport, two proofs of residential address, and they must be in Palm Beach County because those are the only clients that we serve here, people that are coming out of a prison system here, and a proof of social security card. And evidently, the Department of Corrections assists them in getting these documents so that they can go through this process. But they are required to have an appointment in our office, and inmates are encouraged to make their appointments prior to their release date. And the department actually helps facilitate this appointment. We deal with the other category of sexual predators and sexual offenders, and Florida statutes require us to register these folks within 48 hours of arriving in our county, so they must report to our office. The real ID documents are required, and there's no appointment necessary since we are required under Florida statute to place them designation on their DL or ID card within 48 hours. We work very closely with all of the homeless facilities, with the Lewis Center, Compass, St. Anne's Place, and Vita Nova. We have set up a process for their clients to get quickly through our system because we understand an ID is a barrier to housing and employment. Real ID requirements do apply, and we do try and assist those clients. We are sponsoring, organization completes a form for the client to bring to our office within three days of the date signed, and the client presents the real ID documents, and real ID is issued, and all the fees are waived to those specific organizations that we deal with. We actually get about 30 clients a month from these facilities that come, that come in downstairs, and we work them through our process and system as quickly as possible. So, there is a process in place, whether the person leaving the correction system calls us and asks for that appointment, because we will work them into our system. That is on their responsibility, but we issue a lot of these driver's licenses through this population. So, to say that that is not accessible to this population is not true. We do not deal with people who are not citizens of our country, or here on special visas, or whatever, under our federal system. We deal with all of those people, and we have some of those people that have been in our prison system also, so that we have to deal with them. But we do not deal with people who are not in our country legally because there is no way for us to identify who they really are. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. Thank you, Madam Tax Collector, for being here today.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, as a, not as a policy decision that you made, but under the federal structure and the state structure and the authority delegated to you therein, you do not, or your team does not service people that are here unlawfully?
No, we don't.
Does, so then, that excludes kind of categorically that entire population from accessing any type of state-issued ID?
Yes, sir, it does.
Does the Tax Collector's Office, or do you have a personal opinion on the value of where these funds would go, i.e. the community program ID, or community ID program? Do you think it's a good program? Do you think it's well-intentioned? Do you think it has problems that can, you know, lead to fraud?
Well, from my perspective, I don't get to vote on this. So, I can give you my opinion, and you can, like, throw eggs at me or whatever you want to do, but I do think there's a value to it for these immigrants, illegal immigrants that are in our country to have some form of ID. And I think that we should look at setting up a process for that. And I think as Americans, that we rise to the occasion and we're able to discuss this, whether I believe you should spend $75,000 of taxpayer dollars, that's your issue, not mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we had one more question from Commissioner Sacks. My apologies.
Thanks so much for being here, Ms. Gannon. Couple of questions. Your agency then works closely with the Department of Corrections to make sure that when someone is released from custody, that there is a ID, some form of identification for that convicted felon. You're not, if you go to the Department of Corrections, you're a convicted felon.
That's correct.
No other way to look at it. But if someone is a convicted felon and they're released from the Department of Corrections, then you have a process by which your office is able to identify that person?
Well, actually, they need to secure their identity papers prior to coming to us.
Okay, I'm sorry. I think Commissioner Weiss said it's hard for them to get it, you know, when somebody is released from the Department of Corrections. We know who they are.
Right.
Okay. So, if they want to, when they're released, does the Department of Correction give you any documents, this person's a sexual predator?
Oh, yes, we get those. Yes.
Okay, so you get all the documents
Yes.
From the DOC to your office. Whether that person wants to take advantage of that or not is up to them.
Actually, if you're a sexual predator under that statute, you have to get on your ID, you have to get an ID, and you have to have that on your ID within 48 hours of leaving prison.
And then, secondly, with regard to the homeless, does your office offer help or assistance to those, well, let me finish, Ann, to those community projects, to those community offices here, and we have them in the county, we fund them, for those folks to get some form of ID?
We do not do any of that assistance. That is all done within the agency itself.
And within the agency, do they go to your agency?
No, they wouldn't come to us to request a birth certificate. You would have to go...
Oh, no, no, not a birth certificate, but let's say someone is homeless
You would have to have that to get ID.
And they come, and they're, and we're taking care of them as a county agency.
No, you're, you're talking about two different things. An ID through the state requires all the real ID documents, and that agency assists that person in getting those documents. We don't do any of that.
I understand that because I've tried before.
Right, yeah.
And it's onerous, but the, but the requirements that some of us have up here to get a real ID, did you make those up?
No, the federal government did. Congress did.
Okay, the federal government did. And so, that is the same in all 50 states?
It is, certainly. It is, it was done after 9/11 to increase the security in our country because, as you know, there were eight people in the Delray Beach office that were not citizens of our country who received a driver's license and who were in the planes that shot the buildings and the people down in our country. And that's why that restriction applies today.
And that reminds me of when someone was in the state legislature during that period of time. And I think that you went through a lot of those issues with regard to who could get a Florida dri, who could get a Florida driver's license, who had, who, terrorism. I mean, this is, and your, your database, your database syncs up with the United States government's database.
It's actually not my database. It's the state of Florida's, and all that information is exempt from public records.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Ms., Ms. Gannon? I have a quick question. I'm looking at this. So, for real ID, you must only, you can only be a U.S. citizen?
Yes.
Okay, so if someone is a resident...
No, you could be in our country under some other form of visa plan, but you still have to prove all of, you still have to bring us all those documents.
Okay, because I'm looking at this, this, this only says, like, identification, U.S. citizens. And so, if you're a resident, are you...
If you have a green card, yes.
Yeah, would they still be, but they're, but according to this, they're not?
No, it says Consular ID, which, and then on the website, it says the immigration and visa forms that you need.
Right.
Okay, so this, okay, because that's why...
Yeah.
But what we do all agree on is if you're here unlawfully, then you're not getting an ID through DHSMV, through the tax collector, state of Florida ID.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, further into, thank you. Further into public comment.
We have Vanessa, followed by Jason Fairbanks.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having this conversation. Commissioner Bernard, you're right, we have been talking about this for five years or so. So, it's very timely, and it's wonderful to be here. And thank you for everyone who has a similar interest as me, the Commissioner Sacks. I'm glad you're organizing something for Consular IDs and Colonel Prec, sorry, Colonel Precell? Did I say it right?
It's close enough. Thank you.
Close enough. I'm glad you're interested in having a seat at the table. We have literally sat at the same table before with former Assistant Gallagher, I think that's his name. So, we have sat together, but I would...
Close enough.
Close enough. I'm terrible with names, folks. So, I'm really looking forward to sitting with you guys again. I am a managing attorney at the Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach County. I've been before many of you for other projects, but today, obviously, I'm here because I oversee the community ID project. When I reflect on the last five years, I remember getting an email saying, "Would Legal Aid consider hosting a project like this?" And I walked over to Bob Burdish's office, who unfortunately is not able to be here, but he feels very strongly that this is a great project. I walked over to his office, and he leaned back in his chair, crossed his arms, and said, "Vanessa, we need to do this project." And he was right. We do need to do this project. The same people that we represent at Legal Aid all the time, in their divorces, in their domestic violence, in their fair housing issues, are the people who lack an identification, that can access basic services sometimes. So, there's no doubt in my mind that if somebody is eligible for a Florida state ID or driver's license, they should get that. If they can get a Consular card, they should get that. They absolutely should, but some folks still can't get any of that. Now, I'm sure you're aware the money, the initial seed money came from the city of West Palm Beach while Jerry Moyo was the mayor. She passed a resolution, her commission passed a resolution, along with the city of Lake Worth Beach, the city of Belgrade. Many other cities took an interest at that time, but they looked to the county for guidance. They were looking to the county to say, "This is something we can get behind because we think all residents of Palm Beach County are important." There's another element, which is fiscal, right? We need continued support from the county to have an operation that keeps going. We can't rely on the ID card that might be funded one year and not another. And so, for PBSO to support the project and thankfully sees the benefit in it, we need to be able to have a continued operation for them. So, we have issued about 3,000 ID cards today. We have had no problems with them so far. I'm very eager to work with the county. I'm very eager to work with PBSO. I'm so sorry, someone hasn't called you back. I don't know if they called me, but I'd love to give you my card by the end of this presentation so we could work together. Thank you.
Very good. We'll go into questions, ma'am, if you don't mind.
I would love that.
Commissioner McKinley, then Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. Just a question. So, the original seed money came from the city of West Palm Beach for $40,000, and with that seed money, you were able to issue 3,100 IDs. The city of Lake Worth, the city of Belgrade, have they ever contributed, or have they been approached?
They were approached. They did not contribute. They did not have the money, they said.
Okay. So, 3,100 IDs at $40,000. Can you explain why you're asking for $75,000 when the number of ID requests has gone down so drastically?
The number of ID requests have gone down drastically?
You had 3,000 in the first year, according to the presentation today, and then 100.
Sure. It was COVID that brought our numbers down because the national model that you referenced from Greensboro, which is funded by the county, there's other ones that are funded by nonprofits, Greensboro is county-funded. We held large events, indoor large events. And so, with COVID, it was no longer safe to hold large indoor events at different facilities. So, we pivoted at that time to individual, one-on-one sessions for people who really, really needed it. And so, we did go down to almost nothing for a while. Since this is a program that generates money, we were able to float, for the first 40,000, that covered about half a year, of one staff person. We need an entire year of a staff person because we were able to use the money generated to cover the rest of that year. But then, we had nothing left because there were no more people coming because of COVID. So, we need, that's when we realized that we need a continued source of funding. Otherwise, it's, it's not a valid program if it's on again, off again. We want to provide a service that people can rely on, that PBSO can rely on, that banking institutions can rely on. So, having the county's support through a resolution and financial support is very important to that mission.
Okay. And if the, if I'm reading my tea leaves correctly up here right now, if the county was unable to move forward with that funding request today, not completely eliminating the thought of doing the program, just allowing the sheriff to work with you over the course of the next six to nine months and maybe re-propose this funding request next fiscal year after that's happened, what would happen to the program? Do you have any additional funding resources available to you?
We have some funding to operate today and probably next month, and maybe the month after that, but I don't know, I'm not the CFO at Legal Aid, so I don't know exactly how much money we have left. It could mean that the program is not able to operate a year from now if we don't have money this year.
Okay. You didn't receive any private funding for...
We got a private donation. I just don't know, standing here, I'd have to check with Bob on that, how much of that is left. We received recently $2,000 from the Justice Association, Palm Beach County Justice Association, and there was another private donor that was, that allowed us to have a staff person again several months ago. We were able to bring back a staff person who's with me today, Sol Cuto, as the coordinator. But I'm just not sure how long that will last because I don't, I don't know the answer. I'm sorry.
All right, very good. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today, and I appreciate, I think it's important for people to hear directly from you running the program, number one, how it, how it works, and number two, who you serve.
Mm-hmm.
Who are the beneficiaries of these IDs?
How it works, are you looking for an answer about what it looks like when we host an ID drive?
What's the process for somebody, for somebody to establish, to your satisfaction? You know, I mean, they, people just walk in and say, you know, "Hi, I'm so-and-so, and I need an ID," or do you require them to produce documentation to verify who they are?
Right. Thank you for that question. That's a very important question. No, the integrity of the program is very important to me, as well as Bob Burdish. So, we do not just blindly give out ID cards. The, how we start an event typically, you know, the, a room full of people or a small room full of people, we do an orientation, letting folks know what this is and what this isn't. This is not a driver's license. This is not some immigration document. This is merely a photo identification card that people can use, and it may be accepted discretionarily around town. It may be. We make no promises. And for the folks who come to us, just that is enough for them often, is they have so many needs that cannot be met through other resources, that just having the opportunity to maybe go to the pharmacy and pick up, or maybe get a credit union bank account, is enough for them. So, after the presentation, we start a process where, one by one, folks move to a table that I have staffed with volunteer attorneys from the community who meticulously go through whatever documents folks are able to provide. Now, if people don't have proof of their identification or address, they don't get an ID card. They just don't. But what they do need to provide is something to us, and it could be expired, which is perhaps the difference between some folks getting an ID card through Ann Gannon's office, because if you have an expired ID card, it may make it so that you can't just go in and renew your state of Florida ID card, for example. because if you have an expired ID card, it may make it so that you can't just go in and renew your State of Florida ID card, for example. So if they present an old State of Florida ID card, an expired or current Consular card, an expired or current passport from another country, that would probably be sufficient to prove that they are who they are. And we also require two current proofs of residence, saying that within the last three months, this is the address that they have in Palm Beach County.
And then, can you, can you comment on who, who comes to, what type of people you serve?
Well, we serve a whole bunch of people. There are some folks who have current State of Florida ID cards who just want to support Community ID. And so they come to our event sometimes and get an ID card. I have one of my own and I would love to issue all of you one as well. A lot of the folks who come to us are here undocumented. They have no access to any other form of ID card. And when Commissioner Sacks' Consular event comes up, I would be happy to send people to that, but I don't think it's going to meet the entire community's need because one day of an ID drive is just not sufficient for the number of folks that we have in the community who need a reoccurring ID, that's valid. So we have undocumented folks, we have some elderly folks who have no interest in having a State of Florida ID card. We've had disabled folks who come and say, my, you know, I cannot, or my family member cannot sit at the DMV and wait to get an ID card issued. We have folks who were born in this country, who never were able to get a birth certificate and therefore cannot comply with the real ID laws. And I'm happy to say that there's one individual who submitted a comment card who will be speaking about that. So we have a wide range of folks who show up.
Thank you.
We have Jason Fairbanks, and followed by Jill Hansen.
My name is Jason Fairbanks, pastor of First Congregational Church of Lake Worth and co-president of Peace. And just to fill in a little bit of the history, since I've been involved in this conversation from the beginning, the Sheriff's Department was wonderful in working with us to accept Consular IDs. This was back in 2016, 2017. What we discovered is not all countries have Consular IDs readily available. So Sheriff Bradshaw recommended to us that we research Community ID programs, which we did. And as was stated, in 2017, the Criminal Justice Commission took that up and unanimously recommended to the commission that we implement this ID. At that point, the sheriff became opposed to it. And the sheriff would not meet with us for the following three years, until 2020. "Its people of faith, the texts to which we turn are ancient. However, they are not unfamiliar with the plight of humanity. The time and place from which those stories were birthed was a time and place of movement, transition, and migration. One's very existence was dependent on the kindness of strangers and there was an understanding that society must respond accordingly." That is why in the Book of Leviticus, the book that was given to the people of Israel as their code of conduct in relationship to one another, states in chapter 19, verses 33 and 34, "When an alien resides with you in your land, you shall not oppress the alien. The alien who resides with you shall be to you as the citizen among you. You shall love the alien as yourself, for you were aliens in the land of Egypt; I am the Lord your God." 3,000 years later, it is perhaps more complicated. Scripture knows nothing of birth certificates and real IDs. So in our geopolitical reality, how do we practice love for the alien? How do we best respond to those in transition, those who don't have easy access to documentation? Those who, though not citizens of our country, harvest our food and build our homes and then are often invited and welcomed into those homes to care for our children and our parents. There isn't a perfect answer to that, perfect answers are rare. However, there is a good answer in the Community ID of the Palm Beaches, a relatively simple tool that doesn't solve all of the issues or give its recipients everything that they need to thrive in our community. But it gives them a bit of dignity and maybe what they need to at least survive. When people are identified, dignity is given, relationships built, and our community is more secure.
We do have a question, if you'll take, Commissioner Weiss, do you have a question or is this from before? My apologies, thank you, no questions.
We have Jill Hansen, followed by Reverend Dr. John DeMello.
Is Jill Hansen here?
Okay, so we're going to have Reverend Dr. John DeMello, followed by Sol Cuto.
Sol. I am Father John DeMello from St. Patrick's Church in Palm Beach Gardens and part of Peace. There are people in our community who, because they cannot get a proper ID, are treated like nobodies. Our immigrant brothers and sisters, good enough to work on our lawns and build our houses, but not good enough to be treated as equal. And not just one woman, there are several who cleaned houses in gated communities for years, but when the rules changed and asked for ID, they were no longer allowed to enter the community. Our homeless brothers and sisters who lost their documents, are denied services at food banks and cannot provide law enforcement with an ID when stopped. Seniors who cannot drive or find it too difficult and too many obstacles to overcome in order to get a regular state ID. Often, these hurdles are as big as mountains and to the undocumented especially, scary and frightening. All these are people who live with fear, angst, and trepidation. They have nothing to show who they are. Afraid of the police, afraid to go to a bank, afraid to go to a doctor's office, afraid to visit a loved one in a hospital, afraid to drop off or pick off their children at school. These people cannot be said to be really living. So four years ago, hearing numerous such stories of people living without an ID, we started researching and we found the Community ID, a model that is recognized nationally as a best practice, already used in seven or eight states of the country, and most of them founded by the counties. Today, then, so since 2019, this program has brought thousands of people from out of the shadows. So today, you have the opportunity to give these persons the beginnings of confidence and a life free from fear and trepidation. As Commissioner Sacks said earlier, we are a wealthy county. And I say, to refuse to give people IDs to get basic services is shameful. As a fellow human being and representative of peace, I ask that you support the Community ID program. And since I have half a minute, I want to respond to something that the sheriff said. See, when we met with the sheriff, I had to have been to the meetings with the sheriff all the time. And when we first met with the sheriff, he said, try to get the municipalities on board, the police departments. And we went to many of them. Jupiter was agreeable, West Palm Beach was agreeable, Boynton Beach was agreeable, Delray Beach. But others said, what would the sheriff say, what does he say? So they were referring us to the sheriff and the sheriff was referring us back to them.
Sir.
Catch 22.
I understand, thank you for your comments here today.
We have Sol Cuto, followed by Rose Ziff.
Good afternoon. My name is Sol Cuto. I'm the program coordinator for Community ID of the Palm Beaches. The Community ID of the Palm Beaches Program's mission is to empower residents by furnishing them with a tool that establishes a connection to their community and to promote a sense of ownership and belonging. We have three goals. To provide a tool for residents within Palm Beach County that enables access to vital services within their community and to build community involvement and to foster inclusion of all residents. Since our inception, we have developed strong partnerships and collaborations throughout our county. We're proud to say that we have established these connections and through these partnerships, we have been able to not only provide during our ID events the Community Identification Card, but also resources for folks because we do invite organizations to come to our events. And while the folks are there waiting for their turn, we have organizations, nonprofits, most, who are there to provide information and resources. And it's been a truly rewarding experience. Some of the collaborations have been with St. Juliana Catholic Church, the Palm Beach County Library, the Mendel Public Library, Community Health Center, CL Brumbach Clinic, St. Mary's Catholic Church Esperanza Community Center, and First Congregational Lake Worth Church are some of the names. I wanted to just quickly say that we have provided and residents have participated, ranging from the ages of 16 to mid-80s. And they have consisted of seasonal residents, seniors, homeless population students, immigrants, and reintegrated individuals. I have three specific stories that I could share with you, if you please. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, we have two more cards. We have Rose Ziff, followed by Reverend Gerald Kistner.
Good afternoon, thank you for being here. And I'd like to thank Sol Cuto and Vanessa Ko for inviting me today. I am 65 years old. I was born in Newark, New Jersey. That makes me a US citizen. 1956 was a much different time. The night I was born, my mother ran from the hospital with me, my biological mother, and left me on a doorstep, literally. I was raised by that family. I was adopted. I was baptized in the Roman Catholic Church. I was given a name and my birth date. My whole life, my baptismal sufficed. I have gotten a social security card, driver's license, registered for school, voted, everything I could possibly need. Now, my driver's license has expired. I cannot renew it. I do not have a birth certificate, the birth was never recorded. This was pre-computers. This has been a struggle, a hardship. Again, I went from being a US citizen to undocumented and all that that entails. This program is very important to me, although it will not allow me to vote, get a COVID vaccine, or any of the other privileges that documented people. We do take for granted those conveniences and privileges on a daily basis. It will help me to go to the bank, pick up a prescription, and all those things that you have heard others mention. As part of my job, I work as a behavioral therapist. I am on file with a Level 2 background check with the FBI. I have a local background check, my fingerprints, you name it. It's good enough for them, not good enough for the DMV. Cannot renew my license. And I held a valid driver's license in the state of Florida for 30 years. This program, again, it's important, not just to the homeless, to those undocumented, but to people with myself, there are people with exigent circumstances. This, again, will not allow me to have the privileges that I did enjoy prior. But it's a start and it's hope. And we all need some hope. Thank you for listening.
Ma'am, let me recognize Commissioner McKinley for a question or comment.
Just one comment, ma'am. If you still need a vaccine, contact my office and we will make sure you get a vaccine.
I really need my driver's license renewed.
One thing, trying to work, to work on multiple things here.
There really needs to be an alternative form of identification accepted. I mean, prior to 911, my baptismal was fine. After 911, it was no longer accepted. Had to be the birth certificate. I've never been incarcerated, I'm not a terrorist. You know, again, there needs to be an alternative, vetted, acceptable form of ID with the DMV other than a birth certificate, passport. I can't get a passport because I don't have a birth certificate. Never left the country. No Consular, anything. I was born here. So you guys are really, really smart. If anyone could think of anything, please let me know. And yes, please, please support this program, it really is important. It is, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does that conclude public comment?
We have one more, Reverend Gerald Kistner.
Good afternoon, my name is Gerald Kistner. I'm the pastor of Tabernacle Church in West Palm Beach. I'm also a vice president of peace. For many, many years, I've been working with the homeless as one of our initiatives. And one of the things that we have found out in doing this is that it constantly comes up that they don't have ID for many of the services that they would need. This was glaringly lifted up during this COVID situation when they could not go get vaccinations. You've already heard many examples of how individuals who try to go to the hospital to visit maybe loved ones who may work in private developments, now they can't get in because they don't have an ID. And we believe that for this really small amount of money compared to the vast sums of money that you all, just today, that you doled out, it would be something that would be very humane. We are brothers and sisters here in this society and it's how we treat the least of these in our midst. To be one of the richest counties and to have homeless folk who have no ID, you yourself know what it would be like. You know, when you leave your house and you say, oh, I forgot my ID, I better go back and get it. Because without an ID, you're almost a non-person. Or as Ralph Ellison said, you're the invisible person. And so we urge you to go ahead. We have tried, as you heard Pastor Jason say, early on, we met with the sheriff, we tried to meet with him. For three years, he refused to meet with us. He's changed a little bit now, but we want to get beyond that. It should be a community effort. We should all come together as a community to make sure that the least of these in our midst are able to receive the many services that they cannot get because they don't have an ID. And so we would urge the commission to go ahead, pass this Community ID program. It would mean so much to the least of these, to those individuals who do not have a voice. And sure, as you heard Legal Aid say, it's not perfect, but as we work on it and the sheriff's issues, we kind of come together and put all that in a way that it is beneficial. It is something that I think we owe it to those who are the least of these and those that do not have a voice that they can speak for. So I urge you again to please vote this Community ID program in and let's help the least of these in our midst. Thank you very much.
Very good, that concludes public comment on Agenda Item 6I1, which is a funding request for the Community Identification Card Program. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
It's hard to go after a good preacher like that. Thank you very much. And I wish to address this as someone who was opposed to it the first time it came up, at least when I was here. I know it came up 2017 and I wasn't. So I did some research to help my decision and also my argument to my fellow commissioners. And this is a little personal to me, I didn't want to bring it up. My mom is an immigrant and I was born of an immigrant, to an immigrant mom. She was not an American citizen when I was born. I married a man who was born in a displaced persons camp in Berlin, came here to this country during the Berlin airlift. So it is personal. So when I became an assistant state attorney in Miami during the Marielito boat lift, we had thousands of Cubans.
had thousands of Cubans flooding our shores, I got a little bit into it as prosecutor. And then later, I've been a criminal defense attorney for many, many years, 30-some years. And many of my clients are undocumented. So I did some research, and I called the sheriff because I am involved with law enforcement. And the worst thing that could happen to a person, whether they're undocumented or homeless, or D.O.'s coming from the Department of Corrections, is to get arrested. You get stopped. So I checked with the sheriff, and I said, what is your opinion and why? And he gave me this idea for putting together this group, this event. And I looked into it, and I said, you know, we're a county. I don't know if somebody comes from Brazil, or Colombia, or Guatemala. This is a federal issue. And Ann Gannon told you that before 9/11, we could give out, you know, driver's licenses to people who passed the test, but since then, it's a big, big deal with the federal government. So I contacted our Congresswoman, because I'm researching now. I don't know what I'm going to decide. I contacted Lois Frankel's office, and she said this is a pretty important thing because those terrible people who drove that airplane into our buildings in New York City came from Delray Beach. And I suffered a little bit under this when I was in the legislature because they were in my district, and they are in our county. And that precipitated the entire national program for real ID. So I asked her to contact the consulates of those folks who live here, most of whom are undocumented. It's because I'm a county person. I'm not federal. And she contacted the five consulates who are in Miami, and all of our consulates are in Miami, to my knowledge, UK, Italy, Poland, all of them, Germany, and also Guatemala, and Mexico, and Honduras, and the others. And she contacted, and she asked them to send their officers here to Palm Beach County to assist us in getting their passports renewed, their visas renewed, IDs renewed. And based on that, they agreed. Then I contacted the one community program that helps the most folks from Central America. And it has been here for over 20 years, and that's the Guatemala Maya Center. And Father, I don't know if any of you have ever met Father Olafen. I'm sure Catholic priests here know Father Olafen. He's sort of a legend. Father Olafen's a legend because he marched with Caesar Chavez in Los Angeles in the '60s. And he is a member of the peace movement. When some of us weren't even born, Father Olafen was out there in the front. And he helps more people from Central America than any other group that I know of, and with, under the auspices, of course, of the Catholic Diocese. So he wanted to convince me to do this, because this is the easiest thing. Give them money, let the ID card, don't worry about it. But when I told him about this program, he was all in. He's all in. And the only reason he's not here today is because he's elderly, and it's tough for him to be here. But he supports this, 150% to have this event where the passport officers of the five consulates that deal with people who are in our country legally or not, legally or not, stamp their visas. This is a federal issue when it comes to country of origin. And this is why I went to our Congresswoman, Lois Frankel. So I put this together, this event. The counselor officers will be here in Lake Worth Beach. They'll be here. They don't, people don't have to go to Miami to get their visas renewed. They'll be here. We will have county services available to anybody who wishes to avail themselves of them. We do not charge for these, such as vaccinations. And the lady who spoke up and said she could not get a vaccination, I am reading from our own, and I'm so proud of our county, and I'm reading from our own, I gotta put my glasses on, our own website that says, "The federal government is providing the vaccine free of charge to all people living in the United States regardless of their immigration or health insurance status." Yes, and I'm reading this, quoting. "You can still be vaccinated if you do not have ID." We come from such a great county that we will give free vaccinations to anybody who wants them. We also, with regard to education and everything else, we provide that regardless of whether you're here legally or not. This is a great country. This is a great, great county. So I do support a county ID. I do not support a county seal on any identification card, of which we do not have a database in this county, to ensure and guarantee that the person who is in that, on that ID card is actually that person. The only entity that can do that is a government entity. That is why Ann Gannon does it. She's a government employee. She has government rules. The country of origin of any person, when I travel abroad, I take my passport. When they want to know who I am, there it is. If I have a problem, I go to my embassy or consulate in the foreign government. I don't go to a county or a city. I go to there because they guarantee that I am who I am. And that is the most important thing. Now, when it comes to law enforcement, I will tell you as an officer of the court, as an attorney, as a criminal defense attorney in this county, that when someone is stopped in a vehicle, driving a vehicle with no driver's license, why? Because they're undocumented, that every law enforcement officer I know in city and county will look at their counselor ID, will look at their passport, and if that person is the person who they're looking at in that vehicle, that person will get a notice to appear. Because driving without a driver's license is a jailable offense, folks. It's a jailable offense. But if you have identification that is from a passport, our deputies and our city police officers will give that person a notice to appear, let them go home, they appear in court. Usually, I represent them. Usually, I represent them. And that is, and that is the state of the law. That is the way it is, and we need to support that. So if we give an ID from the county with our county seal, which is exactly the way that it is shown by the peace group as to the type of ID that you want to issue, ladies and gentlemen, it has a seal of the county of Palm Beach. Well, I'm sorry. It's the one that I looked at. And if we give $75,000, we are the sponsor of that ID card. So if that person says, well, this will be fine. I don't need to go to my county of origin. I don't need to go to Miami. I don't need to go to Lake Worth Beach because I have a county ID here. I can drive. Well, that's not, that's not sufficient, and that is misleading our undocumented community. I support them. I have supported them my whole life. Let's educate our undocumented community to make sure that they have their country of origins identification and that they will assess, access all of our county services. So at this event, I have invited Bob Burdish's, I've known Bob Burdish for, well, 30 years. I love Bob Burdish of Legal Aid. And the attorneys who represent him, God bless, you're doing a great job, right? Come to my event. As I said to you on the phone yesterday, tell our undocumented community or homeless community what they can get with our county services. We'll already have a vaccination mobile unit there. Let's help our community in the best way that we can, giving them all the services that we have, that we can give them. And on one last note, I just want to say, on behalf of the sheriff, Rick Bradshaw, he is the head of Homeland Security for three counties, three counties, Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach. He's the head of Homeland Security. He has a database of every person in this county or in South Florida based on their country of origin, based on their country of origin. He knows, which means the federal government knows, who is where and where they're going and who they are. So if folks want a community ID, that's fine. They can get a community ID. They can go to a place of employment. I have one right here. But we can't do this for them. This is a federal issue. They have to go to their country of origin. We're going to make it real easy for them. We're going to have all those countries come to here, Palm Beach County, and we'll have them every quarter. And we'll have Legal Aid Society, we'll have the churches there, the GMC Center is going to be there, Father. We're going to have all the other churches there as well. We invite them. And a vaccination van as well. So I applaud your efforts. I think that you have good hearts. I just want to help our community in the best way possible, and that is according to these rules. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for all that time. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor Weinroth.
All right. It's not the money. We've spent more than $75,000 in staff time on this. We've approved over $10 million here today on a voice vote very quickly. It's a matter of principle. It's a matter of, are we going to, and it's not a county ID, Commissioner, it's a community ID. So I think we need to be clear on that. And it also says very clearly on it, this is not a government-issued ID, granted, but it's going to be misunderstood by people who are receiving this as ID. It is not for the county to be in a position of funding this. There are many other sources, nonprofits. Peace is full of churches that amongst them, they could pull this together if this was a priority. It is not the $75. It is the fact that this county cannot be a party to a process that is ripe for fraud, that is going to be misunderstood as something that it is not. And everybody who stood up here and said, you need to do this because, I listen, and the arguments blur. And notwithstanding the very heartfelt presentation that was just made by someone who doesn't have a birth certificate, I can't imagine that one of our federal representatives, whether it's Congresswoman Frankel, or Congressman Deutsch, or any one of our congressmen couldn't work with you and figure out some way of getting you to be validated as being a person who can get a driver's license. But that's not what we're here for today.
With due respect, I can't get in touch with them. I have to.
What we have in front of us is a very simple item, $75 to fund a community ID. We cannot...
$75,000.
$75,000. I'm sorry. What did I say?
Not the money.
Was it, all right, well, look, it's $75,000, $75 million at this point. It really is the principle. And, you know, I'm sure this is going to come right down to a split vote because we are, as I can hear from the discussion here, we are torn as a board. And whichever way this goes, we'll, you know, I'll accept it, but I really think that it is a mistake for us to include this in a county expenditure. And that's my last word.
All right. That concludes comments and debate on the item. Is there a motion? Commissioner Bernard, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion for, to give staff the direction for us to allocate the $75,000 to fund the community ID program, and also to state that it is not a, with the county seal or logo on the ID.
There's a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Weiss. Motion on 6I1 is to give staff, staff requests board direction and to give that direction on 6I1 by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. We'll do a roll call vote, start to my left with Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
No.
Commissioner Moreno.
No.
Commissioner McKinley.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes four to three on 6I1. We thank everybody for your time here today. It's progress, not perfection. This is a debate that I've participated in for a long time. I have no fears about these things being used improperly, and I think we need to keep pushing this issue forward, and it takes a lot of community support to do that. And we need to put fears aside sometimes, and this is one of those issues where I have no fears about it, and I appreciate your advocacy. Even though we don't always get along with peace, we love your advocacy, and we love your passion, and I'm honored to stand by you on this issue here today. Commissioner McKinley, you recognized.
I'm looking at Mr. Bonlaren, who I know has a really wonderful relationship with Congresswoman Frankel's office, and asking if he can help connect the constituent with the Congresswoman's office to work on finding her birth certificate.
All right, very good. Colonel Prichill, thank you, sir, and please send our thanks to Sheriff Bradshaw for his participation via the great Colonel that was here today. We hope that there is a better relationship, more productive relationship between our law enforcement and Legal Aid and the other stakeholders. It looks like we have some comments, though. Commissioner Sacks, and then Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the robust debate on this. It was good. I would like to still invite everybody over to our event that we're going to have in September. You're going to see your good county services at work, along with our federal officer, Lois Frankel's office. And I would like to say, in response to the lady who could not do anything because she was, I don't know if she's still here.
I am.
Oh, get an attorney, easy, through Legal Aid could help you. You will, you will have a birth certificate. If you were adopted, you have a birth certificate. Legal Aid is excellent in this. They're sitting right behind you. Sign up, and they will make sure you get a birth certificate. And then after that, everything is fine. If you're adopted in this country, especially in New Jersey, you'll get a birth certificate.
Thank you so much.
Okay? Thank you.
Bye-bye. And that is, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Weiss, you recognized, sir.
Yeah, I just, I just want to ask that Legal Aid take up the sheriff's office on their request, on their opportunity. They want to sit down, and if, you know, if there's anything I can do to help facilitate that, I'm happy to do that. But I think we would all benefit if you all can work together, and every, we will, you know, the whole community benefits, and I think the sheriff will find that it's a properly run program and with your input and advice. And I think the idea of getting you together at the events and having, you know, showing, working together, I've seen it happen in West Palm Beach, West Palm Beach PD, and, you know, doing some events out in the community. I think it's a really good thing, and we'll all benefit from it. So then, thank you, Colonel, for being here.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to take a five or 10-minute break. So we'll be in recess till about 3:50. No, I can't read a clock. 3:55. Thank you, everybody.
Timing considerations, it tries to keep in mind, if you note, it works with season. So the notices go out and then the contractors and engineers are selected and then the work occurs when people are out, you know, out of the buildings. Some other key features that we like about this program is it basically focuses on the professional judgment of the special inspector and it doesn't put it on county staff because as we've discussed, county staff is really not qualified to make structural assessments on this sort of buildings. And it talks about reasonableness. The forms allow for flexibility. Now, we worked pretty hard on these forms to get the right boxes in them and you'll note that it says, "No repairs required," or, you know, "The building's safe, the building unsafe," and it gives a restricted use section, which is a common what we do with FEMA when we're doing habitability assessments on ATC 25, which is post hurricane or post earthquake disaster inspections. So that's a good thing. It focuses on structural and electrical systems and looks at the items listed in your PowerPoint, foundations, masonry bearing walls, structural steel, et cetera, you know, general loading conditions. It's also part of it is the engineer is asked to look to see if the loading has changed from what the design contemplated. So if they added some kind of storage or some heavy item on the building, you've got to make sure that's right. Waterproofing, window ceiling, electrical, MDPs, feeders, grounding, legally required optional standby systems. It also focuses on life safety systems and thanks in part to my, the gentleman to my right, Division Chief Dorita. He wanted to make sure that we got it right per the letter of Florida Law and NFPA 99. These engineers cannot look at the fire panel. They can't open them. They can't inspect them. They have to have qualified persons inspecting those panels, so it's really important. So what they need to do is check the documentation. That's all they need to do. And also, they can visually confirm that emergency egress lighting is there and path of travel lighting works. The suggested applicability of the draft model right now is 25-year or older buildings east of 95, 35-year or older buildings west of 95. And it, there was a lot of discussion about buildings that had been modified perhaps without permits, where carpeting had been installed, or balconies had been enclosed, or issues were created. We have experienced a lot of issues in those sorts of buildings with deterioration of balconies with carpet and stuff installed on top of it. Tends to trap moisture and cause deterioration, delamination of the steel. And it also talks about waterproofing inspections, you know, beginning with the original, whatever the first inspection is, if that's 25 or 35, making sure waterproofing is part of it and then it gets done at every 10 years thereafter. As we discussed at the last meeting, there was a letter in your packet that was signed by myself and Chief Dorita, and it suggested that people start looking at their buildings. We sent out, I believe, 1,540 copies, is that correct? And the Deputy Executive Director for PZB was like in charge of that, got that done with graphics. And so that, those went out, it was in your packet. And for 25-year-old builders, it said they should contact a special inspector. There's a copy of the letter in this PowerPoint and there's also a copy in your packet. And county residents were encouraged to continue to report any issues with their buildings, perceived damage or deterioration. Condominium managers were reminded of their responsibilities under Florida Statute 718 and I said, we, yeah, over 1,300, we said there, didn't have an exact count at that point. The letter included relevant sections of the Palm Beach County unsafe structure and again, talked a copy of the Broward certification program. Here are the folks that have worked on this committee for the League of Cities and for Palm Beach County. So we've got a lot of good folks in there. And so here's the updated tabular data for the county. The number of buildings, so we need to take a moment and look at this, how many we have. Multifamily buildings by number of stories. So three-story buildings, countywide, there's 2,000, unincorporated, we have 648. You know, we look at four to five stories, unincorporated, we have 248 again, 734 countywide, four to five. Countywide, six to 10, we have 352 and 89 unincorporated. So again, those are the numbers of what we're talking about and we have to figure out where we're going to draw the lines because the numbers can get really large when we draw these lines. Non-residential buildings by number of stories, two to three stories, we have 2,669 countywide, 450 of them are unincorporated. Four to five, 23 and 262 countywide. Six to 10, we don't have a whole lot unincorporated. We have 11 buildings, 104 countywide. 11 to 19, two in unincorporated, 28 countywide. And we don't have any that are 20-plus and unincorporated, but there are two countywide. And again, we go through the numbers there. Now, these are mapped in the following exhibits. Tried to make blow up the legend so you can see. These are all greater than three stories countywide. And, you know, you see the red ones are basically 40 years or older. The yellow ones are 20 to 29 years and, you know, 30 to 30. I think that's, is that 30 to 40 years old? What's the orange? I'm just seeing that's wrong. What does that say? Should be 30 to 40, I'm thinking. 30 to 39 maybe? I just copied it out of that little tiny print and just realized it doesn't read right. Sorry for that. Okay, next slide. So then this is multifamily dwellings over three stories by number of floors. So you see the bulk of the multifamily buildings are three to five stories are the blue ones that are all over the map. And then we have some 11 to 19, we have some six to 10 and some 20 or more, but there's only like one or two 20, not too many 20 or more. And I think the majority of those are in the municipalities. Okay, and the next one is non-residential, three or more stories by number of floors. And then again, three to five is like the bulk, the lion's share. You have a few of the 11 to 19 and a few of the 20, it's like one or two of the 20 or more. Now, I'm trying to figure out what that would be, that's 20 or more stories, non-residential, but it looks like it's in a municipality. So the last slide is, comes directly from a permitting database and it's permits that we issued for threshold buildings. So that's why you see the bulk of them are in unincorporated county or maybe located, you know, areas that used to be unincorporated that were annexed since the permits were issued. Threshold buildings are defined very specifically in Florida statutes, greater than three stories, 50 feet in height or which has an assembly occupancy classification as defined in the Florida Building Code. It's got to be over 5,000. This could be a clubhouse. For example, your neighborhood clubhouse, if it's over 5,000 square foot, falls into this list. And we have had issues, so we like to make sure those buildings are also safe. Not too long ago, we had a major clubhouse in one of those communities where the trusses were in a state of failure and we had to go back and work with the community to get it addressed. Today, this morning, ICC hosted a panel discussion at the Hilton downtown. I did text a couple of folks that were there to try and get input and, you know, Jack Thomasek, the building official for Wellington, was there. Robert Brown, the building official for West Palm Beach, was there. Jack texted me back and indicated that it was a good discussion. They felt there was a lot of good stuff that happened at that meeting. And he said, "But by and large, we're ahead of them with the League of Cities model that we're working on right now." And the next page lists the people that were participating, so it was a pretty lofty group of folks at that. So I, you know, I think that there's some, going to be some good information that comes out of that, hopefully that will be useful to the work that we're trying to do. So the next step, as I understand it, for the League of Cities model is to basically bring the industry stakeholders in to review and offer input. County staff has also been asked to facilitate a meeting at the Vista Center to assist. We are meeting on, I believe, this Thursday at the Vista Center with the smaller group and then we're trying to figure out how many, how to get to the industry folks we need to bring in. It was commented, we need to bring the insurance industry in as well as the other folks that are involved in this. And I think that that may come out of the ICC effort that happened downtown earlier today. So we'll continue to participate with all those groups. So, here we go. So, consideration for discussion of a PBC model, if that is the will of the commission. I think the focus should be on special inspectors, not county inspection staff. I think you don't want to direct the actions of the special inspectors and it can get slippery because some of the stuff that has been sort of suggested, and I'm not saying necessarily in the league model, is for how the special inspector performs their testing. And I, you know, that's not what we do in the building department. We don't design anything. We don't, we don't provide the recipe. We just ask to see how will it perform and show us the performance of what's done. You monitor and validate, you don't design or assume any liability on behalf of the county. I think it needs to adopt reasonable implementation timeframes because have you seen, there's a large list of buildings out there. Folks need to be cognizant of that. So, you know, the old adage, Rome wasn't built in a day. You're not going to certify thousands of buildings in one year. So you have to think about where do you draw the lines and, you know, how many buildings can we reasonably seek to recertify? I think that the, you know, when you look at the Broward model, they're going down to 3,500 square foot, so that's a little problematic for me. So I think the county would have to look at something a little bit different if we go there. And again, I think we need to recognize the majority, the vast majority of buildings in this county are safe. I don't think anybody should be afraid of an imminent collapse. I don't know if anybody was watching the news, but there was a roof collapse in Broward, Dade County, in Dade County today, two-story building, but it was water. It was clearly the roof overloaded with rainwater and basically it was partial collapse. And that happens. We had that happen. But the building was not a major failure, nobody was killed. So I mean, it's, you know, those kinds of things will happen. We had one, the one I showed you pictures of last time, South Military, that was a rainwater. The roof drains were plugged up, overloaded the roof, portion of the wall fell down. Nobody was killed. So, I mean, the vast majority of what we have is safe. Residents can continue to report and property owners can report concerns, we'll respond, we'll investigate, you know, we'll recommend that they need to get an engineer, get a contractor, whatever they, we think they need to do. And we're getting a lot of complaints for, how do I say this, frivolous stuff right now because everybody's so afraid, you know, they want us to come out, you know, that there's a crack in their ceiling on a building that's like six months old, literally. Got one of those yesterday. So, it is what it is. I think we need to look at our demographics and adjust it, you know, maybe we go over three stories or, you know, three or more, that's a big line because there's a lot of them at three stories that we have. And then look at 25 versus 35, you know, what do we want to do? So, that concludes our presentation. We're here to answer any questions that you may have. And I do want to thank Chief Dorita, I wanted to make sure he gets recognized in this because, you know, he brought in the State Fire Marshals Association, so the president of the State Fire Marshals Association was at our meetings. He was actually on hand along with, yeah, with Chief Woodside, this today down at West Palm Beach, down at the Hilton with the other larger group for the Nationals. So we're in, we got, we're in touch with it and we'll take any questions if you have them.
Very good. Thank you very much for the presentation and all of your diligent work. We'll go now to Vice Mayor Weinroth and then Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. And my compliments to you for being able to put this together so quickly and I know it's with the cooperation of League of Cities and our municipalities and they're all to be commended for working together. My concern is this, and let's all step back a second because before Surfside, this was not on our radar. We were fat and happy, buildings were up there, they withstood hurricanes, they withstood most of the elements. And so, notwithstanding the fact that Surfside may be an aberration and we're not going to know until there's a real postmortem what really occurred down there. Was it the original design? Was it the, you know, structural integrity being attacked by the elements? Was there a sinkhole, whatever? But I think we'll all agree that we probably should have been discussing recertification before Surfside. The fact that our two neighbors to the south, Miami, Dade and Broward, who already had a program in place, you know, it probably begged the discussion at least to have a program like this. But what we're not talking about is what we do after the inspection is done. Because remember, Surfside, anecdotally, we've been told that in 2018, they had a report and the report said, "You have a problem." And they weren't able to act on it, whether it was the condo board that was unable to assess its residents or whether it didn't have the political will to do it, we'll not know for a while on that issue. So, number one, I'm worried we're not going to have enough structural engineers that are qualified to do this kind of inspection work. I know I've spoken to some structural engineering companies who want no part of this. They don't want to be near this thing because they don't want the type of liability that this could engender going forward. So, number one, we're going to have to figure out if there's even enough structural engineers to do this in the next five years because certainly in Miami, Dade and Broward, they've probably sucked up every structural engineer that, within thousands of miles of here. So, that's the problem. Number two, the problem is now what do we do after we have the report? Are we going to start condemning buildings? Well, I know our county administrator have grayer hair than she has now trying to relocate, you know, a 22-story building worth of residents who are now looking for a new home. So, it, there are a lot of problems here. And as I raised during my agenda review, there is someone who's not at the table yet that we need to bring to the table and that's the insurance industry. Because my background is insurance and I can tell you that just like after Andrew, the insurance industry is going to look at this risk and say, "Not interested." And the first one to get out of this risk is going to be the reinsurers. And as soon as the reinsurers start heading for the hills, then the primary insurers are not going to have the capacity. And I've also spoken to citizens. They don't even insure for collapse. So, if we force people into citizens because the voluntary market starts collapsing and there's no capacity, then we're going to have people without coverage. So, I commend you for what you've done. I think we need to have recertification program, but I think we also need to recognize that Surfside may be an aberration and we don't need to be responding with our hair on fire. That we need to take this carefully and make sure that we are doing this in a proper process and not create more problems in our zeal to protect our residents from a potential calamity like we saw in Surfside. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. Commissioner Moreno, then Commissioner Sacks.
I have an obvious question. When you were talking about the building data, I just wanted, because I'm sure people are home listening to your numbers, when you talked about the numbers of buildings, this did not include the units within those buildings. This was just the building itself, correct? Not the keys?
Correct.
All right. That was, that's my only question or clarification for those that are home listening because it's, even though it might be one building, it could be 60 units in that building. So it's not just one structure, it's 60 little structures within that one structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to commend Patrick Rutter because it was Patrick that I called the day after Surfside and said, "What are we going to do? I see that we have Dade and Broward programs and I don't see any for us and this is, you know, the line between Broward County and Palm Beach, the sand is the same, the beach is the same, are the buildings the same? And it's just, that east side is very tenuous and I'm not sure if it is. This is not, is not in my area of, I'm not an engineer. So I asked Patrick to look into this and I think you took the right road, which is to bring in the cities and to bring in staff to review exactly where we are. At that time, I also encourage you to bring in insurance companies, especially Citizens Insurance, because they are the insurance of last resort for everything east of I-95 and as Commissioner Weinroth said, they have reinsurers so that if there's any issues, they, they're the first to tell us because their money is on our structural integrity. And that's, that's a pretty good indication of whether something is sound. Second thing I asked, and I'd like to bring it up again today, is we need better laws, state laws with regard to condominiums and their reserves and the responsibility of condo owners. And so I asked that, that, that an attorney who is well-versed in this area of condominium and HOA laws be included in this and then to have your recommendation sent to Tallahassee for committee meetings starting next month in September. Because we don't want to have the county to, to be financially responsible for shoring up buildings that may be structured, we can't, we can't afford it. We're not an insurance company. However, well-written laws that place the responsibility for the structural integrity of these buildings is within the condominium and HOA laws. And we have a, you know, we have good lobbyists in Tallahassee for that and I think that we need to make a recommendation. And that can be based on having on your team a condo lawyer who's versed in those laws so that we're able to show, as Commissioner Weinroth said, it's not, may not be structured, what next? What next? And there are laws that provide for that and we need to make sure that we pull them into this discussion. So thank you, Patrick. I called you and I was like really excited about doing something for our county and you have. And I appreciate all of your work. It's not easy. I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation. Thank you for you guys getting this together so quickly. I think, and you touched on it, the one point is, was managing the quantity of buildings getting inspected as you start to, as this rolls out and I don't know what the solution or the right answer is, but I think it, yeah, it's going to, your group, when you get together to talk about that, on how that might be arranged so that you don't end up with everybody at the last minute before the deadline trying to get it done and then they can't get it done. And so maybe some way we roll it out, maybe starting with the bigger buildings closer to the ocean, working our way back or whatever process makes sense, you know, to you all as building officials. But I think that would be, that was the area, I think, but other than that, I think you really hit on all the real, the points that we talked about in the past and I think, you know, in terms of the direction that you're going, I think you're, you guys are 100% right on.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. We do have one comment card from Richard Radcliffe. Did you want to make comments or you were just here to serve as a resource?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Vice Mayor and County Commissioners. No, I just wanted to thank everybody that's been involved in this. We've had wonderful partnerships in the past. We've done school concurrency, we've done CIRTACs, we've done FEMA flood maps and we have a tremendous model here. I think Commissioner Sacks and Weinroth are correct. This is something we shouldn't be doing. This is something the state should do. The insurance side, some of the other things, everybody has a building code, but we are out front, we are doing this. And I have to thank, again, your staff has been wonderful. We have 40 entities, all the entities at the table. Each entity has the Florida Building Code that they passed. If the state doesn't preclude us and things don't happen, we are going to suggest that everybody, like the county, every city, go to your building code. And within that, you can't change things, but Chapter 1 is administration, you can. And that's where we're going to create a template. We're working all together, but I'm very humbled by this and Kim Glass Castro, who is the Vice Mayor of Lake Park and also the Assistant City Manager in Palm Springs, she's been chairing this and this is one of our, I'm humbled to be in with the group of people. The document that you have in front of you is really magnificent and it's because of the, the brain power and wonderful people that we have here on Palm Beach County, but we are going to bring in other stakeholders, but we're moving forward and thank you all for facilitating and allowed this to happen in such a timely fashion.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Radcliffe. Commissioner Bernard, do you recognize, sir?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank staff for working on this and working with the different entities and, you know, I think that this is a great start and what I do hope is that we continue to work on this, to fine tune it, to make it better. You know, I just, just want to make sure, have we reached out to some of our other interested groups that, to discuss this proposal and how we can fine tune it, Mr. Rutter? Or do you have any suggestions of people that we can reach out to, to fine tune this to, to get to a better decision?
Commissioner, I think if the Board's direction today is that, that we're headed down the right path, we would ask that, you know, that direction and to continue working just for these other groups. We have had one meeting with, I'll call it, entities, not the building officials, other outside groups. We would be looking to do that two or three more times before we came back to you. Would include insurance, would include various different contracting organizations, Gold Coast Builders, probably reach out to, you know, a pretty broad spectrum of people as well that we deal with in development world, I'll call it, in general, as well as architects, engineers, you know, again, folks that we did convene the first time that came through. So we would look for the broadest spectrum of possible, of people to reach out to and, you know, present these ideas and get any feedback they have.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up? Is there any way that you can include AGC and also ABC as those individuals or groups to speak to?
They absolutely, they have been and they will continue to be, yes, and Gold Coast as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
If I can, yeah. The first meeting that we had with them on July 6th, we didn't have anything to show them. We just talked about, you know, there was consideration moving forward. So the next step is bring those groups in, add the insurance industry and everybody else that anybody thinks, condo lawyers, I think I'm hearing. So I'm trying to take notes, who we want to bring in for the next round, but, yeah, we didn't have anything to show at that point.
I think Commissioner Sacks would know some good condo lawyers.
Can you give us a referral, Commissioner?
Very good. Well, job well done. Has the, Mr. Rutter, have you received proper direction from the Board at this point?
Just to clarify, from a timing perspective, if the Board's comfortable, we're headed in the right direction, we will continue to refine it. We're probably looking to have two or three meetings with other groups and if the Board is comfortable, we'd love to have about a couple of months to refine this before we return to you, accepting that feedback, letting us tighten this up and we could come back to you with a pretty well-refined document at that point, that seek your direction on whether to proceed with amending our code to do. That, I would point out as well, Todd and I have discussed a few times in working with the delegation and considering this at the legislative level and what initiatives may or may not be there, so we'll be tracking that as well. And I'd point out that Doug was two years, three years removed as the President of the Building Officials, so that entity has a track going as well. From a number of fronts on the legislative aspects, recovered, we will continue to follow through and cover those as well.
Very good. It looks like we have some more comments. We'll go to Commissioner Moreno, then Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner McKinley, then Commissioner Bernard.
I guess you'll go next. Just a quick comment, Patrick, keep in mind that the legislature loves preemptions. They're usually pretty kind and grandfathering in existing programs, so keep that sort of timeframe in the back of your head. I'd rather have something on the local level before they draft a preemption. Thanks.
Commissioner Moreno, then Commissioner Bernard. My apologies.
I am in favor of a couple of months. I don't think this is something that, we would all love it to be expedited, but you don't want to miss anything in the process, so time well spent, next couple of months would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to include the Realtors, so please. I was so busy thinking of a good condo lawyer, I forgot to include the lawyer, the Realtors, so please, if you can add the Realtors. Thank you.
And property managers.
All right. Very well. Well, thank you. It looks like you're making great progress and have a great team assembled, so we look forward to an update in a little bit. Y'all have a wonderful day. Y'all have a wonderful day. We'll now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Environmental Control Board on Agenda Item 7A1, Health Department. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Vivian Demille?
Move approval. Second.
Vice Mayor Weinroth has moved 7A1 forward, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed, that Vivian Demille is appointed 7 to 0 to the Environmental Control Board. 7A2, this is appointment of one member to the Environmental Appeals Board for a term of three years, and the only nominee is Wayne Blythe. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Marino, to appoint Wayne Blythe to the Environmental Appeals Board. All in favor, all opposed, that item passes 7 to 0. We'll adjourn now as the Environmental Control Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for board appointments. And we'll start to my right with Commissioner McKinley.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mary Lou Bedford to the Discover the Palm Beaches Board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed, that item passes 7 to 0. Any further appointments? Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. I would like to reappoint Steve Rockoff to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission and Michael Prince to the Business Development Board.
Second.
Motion for two appointments by Commissioner Marino, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Vice Mayor Weinroth?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to reappoint Constance Scott, who was here for a while. I guess we wore her out for the Business Development Board, and also reappointment of Doug Mosley to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission.
Motion for two appointments by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed, this passes 7 to 0. I don't have any appointments, but I will update the board that, per statute, I'll be serving as, on behalf of the board, on the canvassing board, and Commissioner Weiss will be serving as the alternate. The statute says if I'm unavailable, then the alternate will serve, but if the chairman or the mayor of the board is available, then that person shall serve.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Commissioner Weiss may be on the ballot. Is he eligible, or are you talking about the municipal elections?
For the special election.
Oh, special election, okay.
All right, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm not sure if I have this correct, but I'm going to appoint Michelle McGovern to the BDB.
Reappoint.
Second.
Well, it is correct by virtue of you saying it, so the Commissioner, by, Commissioner, motion by-
I don't know if I submitted the paperwork.
What's that?
I couldn't remember if I submitted the paperwork, but it's-
Well, it's going to be official in a moment. Commissioner Bernard has appointed Michelle McGovern to the Business Development Board, seconded by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Perry Dempsey to the Library Advisory Board.
Motion by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Marino, to appoint Mr. Dempsey to the Library Advisory Board. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0.
It's Ms. Dempsey.
Ms. Dempsey.
Yeah.
That'll be reflected in the record.
Thank you.
No further appointments. Commissioner Sacks. Very good. That concludes Agenda Item 8A. We'll now go to 9A1, Administration Comments. Madam Administrator.
It has been a long day, and so under that premise, I will make it a little shorter and ask the board to receive and file my board directives.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Weiss, to receive and file administration's update on board directives. All in favor, all opposed, that item passes 7 to 0.
In addition, I need to read something into the record, if you don't mind.
Please.
Notice of public hearing. The Palm Beach County Natural Areas Management Advisory Committee will hold an open-house public hearing on the 10-year updated draft management plan for the county-managed Jupiter Ridge natural area on August 31st at the Vista Center Hearing Room Chamber located at 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida. The open house will be from 5:30 PM to 6:00 PM. The public hearing will start at 6:30 PM. The purpose is to allow public comment on the draft plan. These comments will be taken into consideration by the committee as part of their review and recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption of the management plan. For more information or to request a copy of the draft plan, please visit the Environmental Resource Management webpage. So you can go to pbcgov.org, plug in departments, and then Environmental Resource Management. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go now to the County Attorney's Office, 9B.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go now to Commissioner Comments and start with District 1, Commissioner Maria Marino.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say, Verdina, we're, we've all said prayers for your family on the passing of your mother, and I just wanted to, again, say we're sorry. I also would like to send out condolences to the family of Jonathan Campbell, who was a security officer in Mirasol, who lost his life serving his, serving the community this past week. On the, on proclamations, I would like to request an off-site proclamation congratulating the South Florida Regional Transportation Authority for Tri-Rail reaching 100 million riders. So that's 100 million cars off the road.
Well, half of those were Commissioner Abrams riding.
Very true. I would also like to request an off-site proclamation declaring September 2021 as library card signup month in Palm Beach County.
Motion by Commissioner Marino, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth, for two off-site proclamations as published. All in favor, all opposed, passes 7 to 0. Further comments?
That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner, District 2, Commissioner Greg Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring August 2021 as Florida Water Professionals Month in Palm Beach County.
Second.
Motion for off-site proclamation by Commissioner Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, as published. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Further comments, sir?
Yeah, I, first off, I want to thank everybody for, I thought, a really well-done meeting. A lot of business was accomplished. I think a lot of issues were aired and handled. Also, to Commissioner Sacks, if you can send the information regarding this upcoming event with the consulates that'll be coming up to, to the area, I'd be happy to help get that out to my email list and onto my social media, and so see if we can help some people get that information updated. So if you can send that over, be happy to do that. That's my comments.
Very good. No further comments. We'll go then to Commissioner of District 5, Commissioner Maria Sacks.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioner Weiss. That's very thoughtful because this is a community event, and we are, as a county, opening, embracing all people, all residents, and whether you're undocumented or not, to our county. So I'll certainly do that, and if you'd like, I could do it to everybody else as well, and that way we could have a great showing and have a good time, too. I bet there'll be some refreshments there. So anyways, I have an off-site proclamation for recognizing August 26, 2021 as Women's Equality Day in Palm Beach County. And I'd also like to, to recognize a little sad news that one of our family, community, one of our county family passed away, and that's Vivian, Livy's been my, my, my right-hand in the office. And I know she's worked here in the county for many, many years, and her mom passed away. Her name is Delphina Beckway, passed away on August 12th. And so we, we recognize, you know, it's, it's hard, but when moms go, but we wish the family our prayers and wish them well, and, and just know that we're thinking of them. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Motion for off-site proclamations is made by Commissioner Sacks, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Any further comments, ma'am? Very good. We'll go now to Commissioner, District 6, Commissioner Melissa McKinley.
Thank you. Do business first before comments. I have a request for three off-site proclamations. The first declaring August 31st, 2021, as International Overdose Awareness Day in Palm Beach County. The second declaring September 2021 as National Recovery Month in our county. The third proclamation declaring September 18th, 2021, as Caribbean American for Community Involvement Day, otherwise known as CAFSI, in Palm Beach County.
Motion by Commissioner McKinley for three off-site proclamations as published, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed, passes 7 to 0.
And then Commissioners and Mayor and Vice Mayor, I'm happy to report that shortly after the conclusion of our conversation this morning on our COVID update and our decision to declare a local state of emergency, the healthcare district received a call from the Veterans Administration, and they are offering Lakeside Hospital patients four to six ICU beds. As you know, Congress authorized a fourth mission for the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. That fourth mission is to respond to natural disasters and other community disasters that need immediate attention with their healthcare services. Extremely happy, I know that that direction didn't come out of Tallahassee, that direction came from the local level, and then further direction came down from Washington. So I just want to thank our congressional members and our leaders in Washington and our local leaders for doing the right thing and making sure our constituents have a, an appropriate place to receive medical treatment. So, thank you all for your support today.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. We'll go now to Commissioner, District 7, Commissioner Mac Bernard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring August 2021 as Palm Beach County Black Business Month.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard for one off-site proclamation as published, seconded by Vice Mayor Weinroth. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0.
The next item that I'd like to, first of all, I have a question first for Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker, can you kind of like tell us when your contract expires with the county?
My contract expires August 31st of 2022.
Okay, so it's about a year before your contract expires.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like for, since Ms. Baker's contract expires within a year, with your approval, would love, or with commission approval, would love for the mayor's office to have a conversation with Ms. Baker, to kind of like work on her, on her contract in regards to, you know, the terms of extending her contract further.
I would be honored to. Would you like to have that conversation?
Yes, I will have that conversation.
Well, is there any objection to that conversation being had with me on behalf of the board? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you. The next item, Mr. Donnie Dobson, Ms. Maria, Commissioner Sacks, I think you're at Donnie's place. He's retiring, so I've had some good fried chicken from Donnie's place, and so I'm going to send a happy retirement to Mr. Donnie Dobson and the Dobson family in Delray Beach. The other item that I'd like to bring up is the OCR team with the assistance of PBSO and our amazing volunteers do an excellent job yearly on the Back to School Bash, and this year we had the help of the Clerk's Office, Yarabruzo's Office, also volunteering, which was great. However, I would like to please direct staff to have the conversation on how we can expand eligibility for people who will qualify for the Back to School Bash. I would also like to include the PBSO to be involved in that discussion, especially the community policing unit within that conversation. The reasoning is because every year in my office, we get phone calls that there are parents that are not zoned in the, in the OCR zone, that they would like to be able to receive some of those, and so I'd like to make sure that, what are the discussions that can be had in regards to helping those families? And I believe that's it.
And certainly that's without objection, board support seeing that. Any further comments? Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you, Mayor. On your behalf, I'm going to request an off-site proclamation declaring August 27, 2021, as Dr. Andrew Leapoff Day in Palm Beach County, and also request an off-site proclamation declaring August 27, 2021, as Deputy Sheriff George Clem Douglas Day in Palm Beach County.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner McKinley for two off-site proclamations on my behalf. All in favor, all opposed, that passes 7 to 0. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome. On my own behalf, I'm going to request an off-site proclamation declaring September 2021 as Diaper Need Awareness Month to Palm Beach County. Our junior league in Boca Raton continues to champion this as a, as an issue that is affecting a lot of families.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner McKinley, for one off-site proclamation as published.
Thank you, Mayor.
All in favor, all opposed, passes 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bernard mentioned, and we all certainly take great, great pains to see what Haiti is going through. Obviously, Haiti just cannot get a break. In fact, you know, it wasn't just about 11 years ago that there was a devastating earthquake there, a 7.0, where four students and two professors from Lynn University were killed in that earthquake. So certainly Haiti is in our minds in Boca Raton, and we certainly hope that there's relief for those whose families were affected by this. And I know that right now they're asking that people hold back on aid until they can figure out how to use it most effectively, and I'm sure Commissioner Bernard's office will be facilitating those requests going forward. So, again, they should be in our prayers. It's just amazing the kind of heartache that these residents have had to endure over the last few years. And that's the end of my comments.
Very good. In response, Commissioner McKinley. Oh, is that from before?
That's from before.
My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, I just, it wasn't in response to Haiti, but God bless you, Commissioner Bernard, and your family, and the family members of your staff and former staff. I know my comment, Mr. Mayor, was in regards to declaring it George Clem Day. For those of you that haven't been reading the article, Mr. Clem, through historical research, and wonderful article written by Vice Mayor Weinroth's former assistant, Joe Capozzi, formerly of the Palm Beach Post, through historical research, have determined he is actually the first Palm Beach County Sheriff's deputy who was ever killed in the line of duty, and they discovered that he'd never received a proper memorial, burial from the sheriff's office with the law enforcement pomp and circumstance that goes along with that and the recognition he deserved. So they've done a lot of research done by deputies themselves and have found where his burial, where his grave was, and that is the day that you've just declared, Mayor, and that is who is being recognized. My office will be happy to put out the details. I think you all should have received an invitation from the sheriff to attend that memorial event out in the Lake Harbor area and in the very western side of Palm Beach County, but that is who we're honoring, and I thought it deserved a little bit of recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Yes, I think on August 27th, I'll be joining you in the western reaches of our county to make that presentation of the proclamation on the board's behalf. And if I recall correctly from my research, Deputy Sheriff George Clem Douglas was actually serving some sort of warrant with his father, who was the sheriff, I believe, when he was murdered in the exercise of his duties as a deputy sheriff. So it will be a special day for Palm Beach County and for the Douglas family, and I appreciate the recognition and seeing y'all out there if you'll be attending. And then, of course, on that same day, I'll be presenting the Dr. Andrew Leapoff Day in Palm Beach County, who was a renowned vascular surgeon who passed- in Palm Beach County, who was a renowned vascular surgeon who passed away just prior to COVID, and is an amazing person, and I'm very honored and appreciative that the board voted unanimously to honor Dr. Andrew Leapoff with his own day here in Palm Beach County. And beyond that, on my comments, I just appreciate the dialogue and discussion and decision-making that has occurred today. On behalf of the board's direction, I have executed the local state of emergency. It's been properly executed by the clerk and the county attorney's office. It will be filed there with the clerk and comptroller shortly. And I look forward to continuing to work in the best interests of our residents in this county. So with that, and without any further comments, the Board of County Commissioners is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.